All this meeting in order, those in attendance, please rise, join us with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome all of our friends and neighbors and colleagues in joining us in this regularly scheduled November fourth, twenty twenty four city council meeting. As you come in tonight, which would be to my right, everyone else's left, there's a set of double doors, you'll walk through those double doors. There's a desk, on that desk is a sign in sheet, if you're a guest with us tonight, please sign in. City clerk, can I have a roll of call?
Yes, Councilor Morrison.
Here.
Bellino.
Here.
Pratt.
Here.
Sharp.
Here.
Soha.
Present.
Stu Chol. Veer.
Here.
Morrison. Excuse me, Wolfram.
Here.
And Mayor Stockford.
Here.
Get a big present.
Thank you, Katie. I did receive correspondence from Councilman Stu Chol, who will not be joining us tonight. We'll move into approval of agenda, city manager, if any members of council have any changes to make to the agenda tonight. Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So who, support?
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrison, seconded by Councilman Veer to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, we'll move on to public comment on agenda items only, during this time, the podium will be open. Please limit your comments to three minutes, please limit your trips to one to the podium. Remember, if you're going to speak during this particular public comment period, make sure it has a direct tie to something present on the agenda. I would also like to mention a couple things, I've got this handy dandy timer right here. It's set for three minutes, at the end of three minutes, whether you're done with your comment or not, we will ask you to, uh, to sit down. That's not out of rudeness, or meanness, or not wanting to hear your point, we just have to keep some sort of decorum in here. Um, the other thing I would mention is, if you're here to speak on the resolution to adopt Brownfield Plan for Three Hundred Hidden Meadows Drive, we're going to have a public hearing on that, which means there will be a particular public comment section for that, which will give you the opportunity to, um, speak with council members and possibly ask questions to the developer, so I would, uh, I would suggest saving your public comment for that time, if that's what you're here to speak on. Podium's now open.
I want to speak on the last meeting, that would be the minutes of the meeting, um. One thing I want to talk about is the, uh, Ms. Pratt, uh, didn't speak at all during the, um, discussions, a lot of discussions that was going on, which I think she sits there and listens a lot, puts the information together, and then she votes the way she feels her constituents in the wild. She does not vote in support of her spouse that may work someplace, or anything like that, she votes for her constituents. I thought it was very rude when someone said, basically looked right at her and said, you, she hadn't spoken. And I thought that was very rude for someone to say. Basically, I felt it kind of chastised her for not speaking, just listening to what everybody else said. The other thing I didn't think was a very good comment was the one about the, I kind of looked at this as like a closet drinker, maybe? Did you say, some of this should have been discussed behind closed doors, with a bottle, a glass of bourbon and a cigar? That's not what the people of the public want to hear you talk about, it's how you're, that's the way you think things should be discussed in the city. They think it should all be open, and I just thought that was a very rude comment, I don't know if the person realized what they were saying or not, but it was, it took their character, let me put it that way, thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Any more public comment regarding agenda items only? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on in the packet to the consent agenda, on the consent agenda, we've got approval of bills, city MVP planes of October third, payroll of October tenth and the twenty fourth, city council minutes of October twenty first, finance minutes of October twenty first, public services minutes of October fifteenth, EDC minutes of October fifteenth, border review minutes of October fifteenth, traffic control order for Veterans Day Ceremony, then there's the Veterans Day Ceremony Use Agreement, and then there's another traffic control order for the holiday steam powered passenger trains, very exciting. Any discussion on any of the items in the consent agenda? Seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
This was on the finance committee minutes? Oh, of October twenty first, I have October seven, do I have a later?
You might be in the wrong agenda, Councilman Wolfram. We are on the agenda for November fourth, twenty twenty four, that's probably the last agenda.
Oh, got it.
Do it all the time.
Okay. Yep, it's my new professor.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrison, seconded by Councilman Soha to approve the consent. Oh, was it Cindy? I'm sorry. Okay. Motion on the floor from Councilman Morrison, seconded by Councilwoman Pratt to approve the consent agenda, may I have a roll of call, city clerk?
Councilor Morrison Bellino?
Yes.
Pratt, yes, Sharp?
Yes.
Soha?
Yes.
Veer?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes.
Mayor Stockford?
Yes.
Councilor Morrison Morrison?
Yes.
A zero, let's approve.
Thank you, Katie. Okay, we'll move into communications petitions, the only item on there is, uh, Hillsdale County Commissioner update from Commissioner Ingles, and I have it on good authority, Commissioner Ingles is not in the state of Michigan, so. Okay, so, we've got no communications petitions, we'll move into introduction and adoption of ordinances, public hearing. This is for the resolution to adopt Brownfield Plan for Three Hundred Hidden Meadows Drive, let me get caught up in my packet to it. Um, but as far as I know, we've got some gentlemen from Allen Edwin Homes with us, so perhaps you gentlemen would like to take the podium first, or Sam, you wanna?
No, I'm just getting the screen set up for them here, for the presentation.
Thank you for having me here tonight, my name's Brian Farkas, I am the Director of Workforce Housing for Allen Edwin Homes. Um, I'm gonna do a brief presentation, and then we can open up to some questions. Uh, so first, I think we're all familiar with the site, uh, we're looking at doing additional development on. Um, but I think it's worthwhile to go through some history of the site, and having got to where we are today. So, development started in nineteen ninety nine, uh, and carried on until about two thousand and six, when it sold for probably a variety of economic reasons. Um, I believe the EDC listed it for sale with several different real estate agents from that time. Um, in two thousand and twenty-three, March, spring of that year, uh, we signed a purchase agreement, both for the back portion of the property that we were talking about today, and the front portion of the property that we built sixty duplex units on, um, all of which are rented but for one, that's just finishing up right now. Our company's very happy with the performance of those workforce housing units up front. We had a groundbreaking, I think a few of you were there, uh, beautiful April morning, uh, and then that was in April, and then the first tenant's event in October. Um, we're a large company, we build about eight hundred homes a year, we've got a very tight scheduling, uh, construction process, so I think that, that turnaround time is, uh, is something we like to talk, talk about. Um, and so we believe this proposal for the back portion of the sixty-one additional units closely aligns with the city's master plan. And so here's our, our vision for the study, we've got sixty-one single family homes, developed in two phases, and subdivision of land along individual ownership of each lot, and it's fully engineered in compliance with local requirements, I believe the city of Hillsdale requires a twenty-five year flood requirement, uh, we engineered it to a hundred year flood requirement, the water is detained on site, as you can see, we've got two basins, one for phase one, and one for phase two. A little bit about the way we build homes, so we've been in business about thirty years, we're a portage based company, we use name band, name brand partners in all of our homes, Carrier, um, Terminal Williams Panks, GE Appliances, things like that. We build, as I said, about eight hundred homes a year, and, and we've gotten pretty good at it to the point where, if you guys are there at the open house for the duplexes, I think someone mentioned, the fan in the bathroom doesn't seem to be going off. Our homes are so airtight, by code, we have to have a fan running to force air in and out of the house. Um, so they're very highly efficient homes, the graph right here just shows the energy efficiency of our homes. An existing home is the lower arrow there, that's about a one thirty HERS score. The HERS score, the lower you go, the, the better off the rating is, think of it as a MPG for a car. And then new homes come in, the average new home comes in about a hundred, we are at sixty, so we're quite proud of our energy efficiency. And this is exactly, uh, what we intend to build here, this is our tech new series, these are three, four, and five hundred homes, I, I think they, they're stunning. Um, events are the developments where we've rolled these out, and they're quite beautiful. So before we get into the nuts and bolts of the deal, um, I want to talk briefly about why Hillsdale, and why is Allen Edwin interested in Hillsdale. Um, about two and a half years ago, when I was talking to the leadership group of our, our company at, at dinner with the owner and another vice president, and we were going through the kind of model of how they build homes, and the business model, and how they do it, and the movie Moneyball came up. And if a company had a favorite movie, Moneyball is our favorite movie. We love looking at metrics, we love looking at data, we love building proprietary systems to show us where our competitors aren't seeing opportunities. And so what I did here, and what I'll show you, is our internal data, so we break the states that we operate in, and right now, we're primarily in Michigan, we've got work in northern Indiana, Ohio. We break things down into school districts, and we look at what homes are for sale by school district, what are they selling for, what's the year built, what's the square footage? Everything like that leads into how we build and sell about eight hundred homes a year. Which you see here, I know it's really small, um, but you see price spans along the bottom. I'll point out, it starts out at about a hundred to a hundred and twenty here, and goes up by about twenty thousand dollar increments, all the way up to five twenty to five forty at the end. The blue bar represents what's sold in the last twelve months, and the gray bar is what's currently active. And the reason I bring this up is to show you, we're looking at making an worth of fifteen million dollar investment of our own capital and our own risk, we're not doing this blindly. So, here's the price band we believe will play in, in the Three Meadows North target pricing, two eighty to three sixty. Excuse me real quick. So to summarize that data, from the previous slide, we saw twenty-six homes sell in that price band the last twelve months. Twelve homes sold in the last three months, and there's nine active listings, so from a capitalist's point of view, the nine selling, that's our competition, what, what are we dealing with here? We have about three point eight months of supply, so that's considered a seller's market, we like those markets, you're gonna see homes depreciating by single digits. The average square foot's about twenty-three hundred, right where we're gonna be building, um, and the average home built was in nineteen thirty-nine. So we're looking at some very, very old housing stock. I gotta tell you, we build across the state, this is exactly the kind of market we thrive in. And here is our locations of where we build across the state. And these are municipalities in Michigan where we've built over fifty homes, there's a, a running toll at the bottom. And so to summarize it, we're projecting about a ten home a year pace of the buildup, that's what makes our pro forma work. There'll be sixty-one new single family homes, we're gonna reserve thirteen of those for workforce housing, I'll, I'll get to that in a second. But we're gonna basically keep rent below the market rate for the workforce housing segment, eighty to a hundred and twenty percent area median income, and I'll show you the real numbers on the next slide. Now, the remaining homes will be offered for sale. So to, to be very clear, the developer here is asking for, for, for no upfront money from the city. There's gonna be no checks written from the city of Hillsdale to Allen Edwin Homes. We are solely asking for the taxes that, that we generate, get funded back to us to a certain amount for certain purposes. Um, again, we know a hundred percent of the risk, we're gonna be putting in the site infrastructure work first, that's about one point eight million dollars, and then the new home construction on top of that's gonna be over sixteen, fifteen, sixteen million. The reimbursement period is, is twenty years, and it only works, we only get paid back if we're successful. Excuse me, I'm really glad I brought the water. So the seven million dollars we're targeting to get back, and Joe here, my colleague, can walk through the, the reasons, and, and the, where each dollar goes. If we're successful, and if we do things right, we're getting about three hundred and fifty thousand back a year from tax revenue that is not currently being generated. And so to make this work, the site that's then started in, in nineteen ninety-nine, there's four programs that are working here. So Allen Edwin Homes is obviously, and then Copper Bay Rental is our wholly owned subsidiary, uh, that handles all of our rental housing, we've got about four hundred rental loans in our fleet right now. And so we're having the for sale owner occupied rental items, that's one kind of Lego stool. We have the for leasing component for Copper Bay, market rate, and we've got the market rate, or, uh, the workforce housing for Copper Bay. The new law at the bottom there, the tax increment financing, is a new law, it's about fifteen months old, and that is kind of allowing us to pull all this together. Some quotes from our Copper Bay tenants. And then, I, I want to walk through this closely, because I, I want to be very, very clear here. As they say, I want to be clear, I'm hoping you can understand my voice, uh, but I want to be very clear, the bottom rectangle right there, uh, on the screen. So first of all, the bottom, you've got elapsed time, and then you've got property values on the vertical axis on the left. So if you think about this, whatever the parcel is paying in property taxes today, and whatever the city is receiving from this, we'll continue to receive it. What we're asking for is the green box, so the money we put in is gonna drive up the property values, that's gonna lead to increased tax relief. That's what we captured to pay ourselves back. Once we're paid back, the city now has sixty-one new homes that are gonna hit the tax rolls all at once, once we're paid back, and that's the blue box to the far right. It's very clear that there's, I'm not sure it's being said in the, in the community, but at no point is the city of Hillsdale gonna write a check to Allen Edwin Homes, there's gonna be no impact on that. Now, the workforce housing segment. So, the portion of this development that's we, for workforce housing, we're gonna have to have people qualified for the, uh, income levels. So the top group is, how big a family is, is how much they can make, so for a family of five, they have to make below a hundred and three thousand a year. And then below that is the rental limits, and that covers the maximum rent we can charge. I currently believe the pro forma is built out, we're gonna be in the eighty percent four bedrooms, so we're gonna be living our rent to about seventeen, eighteen hundred a month for four bedrooms. And so that's our vision for this site, we've got affordability, market rate, and ownership release. One last thing I do want to touch upon, I heard you talked about the data in, in Hillsdale, and what people make in the median income. So here's a slide from the U.S. Census Bureau, and the median income for household is fifty-nine thousand. If you go to families, it jumps to seventy-one thousand, and if you go to married couple families, you're up over eighty thousand. We're also looking at the people making over a hundred thousand, you've got fifteen percent over a hundred thousand, five percent over a hundred and fifty thousand. We think this is a very healthy market, I think it's the exact market we do really well in. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to questions or the public comment, thank you.
Council, any questions?
Hi. I have a question, um. The, we have a tax increment financing authority that covers the city itself, and is this a sep, this is a separate tax increment financing area?
I'm gonna take this one, hi, Joe Augustinelli, I'm with Michigan Growth Advisors, we're the economic development incentive consultants on the project, and then helping, uh, helping Allen Edwin uh, with this, this project and others around the state, so, good question, um, the, uh, this is, we're utilizing the Brownfield Redevelopment Financing Act, so the tax increment financing, um, authority is the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority Board, which would be different than a TIFA, uh, board that you may have in other parts of the city. There's seven enabling statutes in Michigan that allow for tax increment financing, and this is utilizing the, uh, Public Act three D one, Brownfield Redevelopment Financing Act.
So the tax increment financing is coming through the Brownfield Redevelopment Act rather than the TIFA Act?
Yes.
It's a, it's new legislation, he said it was only fifteen months old from the state of Michigan.
Yeah, if it's helpful, I can give you a little bit of background, um, so the Brownfield Redevelopment Financing Act, your probably first question is, wait a second, this isn't a contaminated site, why are we talking about the Brownfield program? Um, so the legislature, uh, amended Act three D one last summer, uh, summer of twenty twenty-three. Um, prior to the change of the law, you could only use the Brownfield program for contaminated, bladed, and functionally obsolete and historic properties. Uh, they added a new qualifying trigger, uh, last summer of housing property.
Here's what I found.
And I watched his talk. Um, uh, they added housing property as a new category of eligible activities under, under the Brownfield program. Essentially saying, we have a severe housing shortage statewide, we need a, a financing tool that can allow, uh, communities to inject incentive to, uh, allow development to move forward, and said, anything with housing is eligible property under the Brownfield program now.
And when did you say that was amended?
Hmm, July of twenty thirteen, twenty twenty-three.
So I have twenty twenty-three?
Yes.
So.
Maybe sixteen months, I didn't do that very well yet, uh, year in, last summer.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Any more questions? Okay, we will open up the podium for public comment, during this time, the podium will be open, please limit your comments to three minutes, please limit your trips to one to the podium. Remember, we are speaking specifically on a Brownfield Plan for the city of Hillsdale pursuant to and in accordance with the provisions of Act three eighty-one, the Public Acts of the state of Michigan of nineteen ninety-six as amended, and this is regarding the Three Meadows property. And if you're a member of the public, and you have any questions, I'm sure, um, that we can hopefully get those answered by the developers while they're here. So this is your opportunity, podium's now open.
I'll start it off, my name's John Condon, I'm a fifty-eight year resident of Hills, Hills City area, it's the city end area, um. Moved here when I was nine years old, uh, owned three houses in the city of Hillsdale, I currently own, uh, two properties in the industrial park, and bought, uh, bought and sold another property inside the industrial park. Um, I joined the EDP group back in two thousand and thirteen, which was the Economic Development Partnership for the county of Hillsdale, uh, Hillsdale County. Uh, I was a real novice in economic development, but I figured, hey, it's gonna be easy, just, it just gets some jobs and we'll grow the community, or grow the county. Boy, was I naive, there's a lot involved in economic development. Uh, two thousand and seventeen, I grew, uh, joined the Economic Development Corporation for the city of Hillsdale, uh, similar group but a smaller area. Uh, I've also joined the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, uh, I'm the current chairman of both of those committees, or both of those corporations. Uh, when I started in the group in two thousand and seventeen, a study was done, it was called the Rising Tide, Rising Tide Study, and it outlined a lot of positives and negatives of the, the city area. Uh, and this word kept coming up in the, uh, in the, in the study, the word housing kept coming up, we lack housing. Uh, there was a lot of positives in the community, but one of the things, as far back as two thousand and seventeen, was, uh, how do we create more housing? Well, we had the Three Meadows development area, we had that north area, uh, you know, originally it was designed to have, you know, three different phases in there. Uh, we, we did not have any infrastructure, the, the biggest, uh, roadblock in developing Three Meadows was, there's no roads back there. So, we talked about, you know, maybe we could go to the city council and borrow a couple, you know, a couple million dollars and build some roads for some vacant lots, and we kind of wrote that off as a, as a good idea. So we kind of were, uh, in discussions, we decided that we, we're gonna have to wait for a, a good developer to come in here and decide to build, you know. One thing about industrial, in, in, uh, economic growth is getting investment in the city. We've gotten, the colleges, a lot of investment, the hospitals, a lot of investment, you know, Myers and all these, a big investment. I've just spent four million dollars in the city's industrial park, my investment. Uh, now, Allen Edwards is, uh, Edwin's is, uh, wants to invest in the city of Hillsdale, and that creates economic growth. One more comment, uh, and the board, in the Brownfield Redevelopment, uh, meeting on October fifteenth, we discussed the, uh, the Act three eighty-one work plan, and a motion was made to recommend to the council to approve it, uh, that motion was passed, that we would recommend that the council approve that Act thirty, three eighty-one work plan, thank you.
Thank you, John. Any more public comment?
My name's John Knox, and I live, uh, on eleven Windswept, and, uh, this project will be extended right past, I, I'm on a dead end street right now, but this project will be extending Windswept, and I'm not against the development, but I want it to be done fairly. And I don't think that sixty houses should be coming, sixty families should be coming down past my street at eight o'clock in the morning. I think we should have more exits from this, and I want to be sure that that happens. And also, I would like to ask if I can buy the lot next to me as a buffer between this project and my house, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, John, is the lot next to you for sale?
Well, it, yeah, I could have bought it, I mean, I didn't know this project was going in, I, I bought in nineteen, or two thousand and fifteen, and I was never told that this project was on its way since ninety-nine. I mean, I think I should have been told that. Or I wouldn't have bought that lot, would have wanted to sell that lot.
This project hasn't been underway since ninety-nine, though.
Didn't you say that?
This is all new, they, I mean, they were just saying this, the, they're, they're doing this development off of legislation that's only fifteen months old, as it is, so.
Okay, well, that's fine, but I just would like to make sure it's done properly.
Of course. Any more public comment? Go ahead, Jim.
I could even, thank you very much for the opportunity to address the critical need for workforce housing options in Hills, the city of Hillsdale. Um, as the economic developer for the Hillsdale County, my job entails business attraction, primarily industrial business, and the retention of our existing businesses. Typically, industrial jobs are jobs that pay well, create trickle down income into our smaller businesses. In the last eighteen months, we have had four industrial attraction projects choose Hillsdale County as their location over other communities. That's a tremendous amount of investment in Hillsdale County, however, the lack of workforce housing options has been an ongoing issue to also attract the employee base that, that's tied to all of this investment. And due to the lack of available housing options, most employees are choosing to commute to the community instead of living here. That means they buy groceries, they go out to eat, they go out to entertainment venues, they pay taxes, they do volunteer work, and their children go to schools in other communities, not Hillsdale. And these are communities where housing costs are either parallel or higher than Hillsdale County. So it isn't they don't want to live in Hillsdale County, they can live in Hillsdale County because they don't have the options they need to buy housing. Um, when I make retention calls to the existing businesses, time and again, the issue is that they are having trouble attracting professionals to fill their jobs that have required the higher talent, mechanical, industrial, electrical, quality engineers, nurses, doctors. It's really hard to attract those folks to the community. We're competing in Hillsdale, not only for the business investment, but also for the people. EDP spends a significant amount of time and money to attract people, in Site Selection Magazine ads, we're spending ten thousand dollars, a full page ad for Hillsdale County to attract people for the quality of life, another full page to attract people in Hillsdale County for our industrial ability that we have here, we have great power in Hillsdale County, and different things that our industries need. Um, and us, the sites- And the site selection magazine is gonna go out to over forty-one thousand individuals. It's not a newsstand. In the contiguous United States, Alaska, Hawaii, Asia, Canada, and Europe, I'm trying to reach out. It's killing me that I can't house people when we have people who wanna come and invest in our community. This conversation about Three Meadows, I was on the EDC board years back, and now that we actually have a project, I would really like to implore counsel to consider the many reasons that makes it really good sense to have the workforce housing options in our community. Our future growth in this county depends on having the housing to attract business and the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. My name is Timothy Green. I live in Ward Three. I attend, do you know?
Sorry, Tim.
Do you know what it is? I attended the EDC board meeting where they recommended the, that this be recommended to counsel. And to me, sitting in the meeting, it didn't really seem like any members of, it didn't seem like most members of the EDC wanted to hear arguments about this. Everybody who spoke, except for the developers, and I think everybody but the developers who spoke at the EDC meeting were against the project. And even though that was the case, there wasn't much discussion by the EDC members about this. I hope you guys put, I want you guys to put more thought into the decision than they did the recommendation. The last, Sue, the last lady who came up, spoke about a workforce housing crisis in the state of Michigan, especially in the city of Hillsdale. And this development is going in, or this subsidy is being asked to be given to Allen Edwin because of that workforce housing crisis. I contest that this exists in Hillsdale. It's being asserted, but I don't, I don't really see the evidence for it. There are multiple unsold homes in Hillsdale. If you look at Zillow, you can see them, that they've been on the market for a long time, especially the higher-income homes in Hillsdale. There's, and, yeah, especially the upper-income homes. I think multiple comments have been made to you guys by email about some of the other projects that counsel has approved, where multiple homes sit unfilled. I think this is unfounded, but I think that some of the homes that have already been built by Allen Edwin in that area of Three Meadows are not sold, or there's nobody living them already. And on top of that, these homes are being billed at two hundred and fifty thousand two, or two hundred and eighty thousand, or three hundred and fifty thousand dollars each. I know, I understand that thirteen of them are going to be rented under market rates, which is another discussion, but the median income of Hillsdale is fifty thousand. Top, only the top ten percent of residents of Hillsdale, or people coming to Hillsdale, are going to be able to afford a home that, at the minimum, is two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. If we want workforce housing, we should build workforce housing. I know that some of the EDC plots have been sold to individuals. I'm maybe just throwing that out there. Maybe that's a better idea, to continue in that path. I think building multiple very expensive homes that are all the same is not very beautiful for Hillsdale and won't solve the workforce housing crisis that's being, that's, you know, that everybody says is going on. So even if it is existing, this is not the way that we should solve the issue. So I encourage counsel to ignore those claims and then find a better way to create housing in Hillsdale. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Any more public comment?
Good evening, counsel. My name is Jeremiah Regan. I live in Ward Three. We're hearing two separate and complimentary arguments, supposedly complimentary. First, that there is massive demand for these homes, and second, that the demand is not enough that they can be done without taxpayer subsidy. We're hearing about the need for workforce housing. I don't know any workforce people. I know citizens, I know human beings, and I'm concerned about justice. If a regular citizen attempted to build a home in order to sell it, he would not receive a tax exemption of twenty-five years or a tax reduction of twenty-five years from the city. He would not get security on his investment. Anyone who wishes to invest is taking on a risk. They take on that risk because they believe they will profit from it. If there is sufficient demand for these homes, they should not require a tax reduction. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremiah.
I agree. I think this would be a good development. The most important thing, I think, is they gotta have a way to get there for emergency services, which they don't have. You gotta go like five miles out of your way to get out there. So, and to go along with what the gentleman said, if there's demands for hotel rooms, then why do we need to give the college no taxes on their property? I mean, if the demand's there, why do we need to do it? Doesn't make sense. I guess it's a two-sided street.
Thank you, Jack.
My name's Sam Olivo. I live here in Hillsdale. I work here in Hillsdale. I've been a member of Hillsdale since my whole life. I work in town as a financial advisor and own a home here on South Manning Street with my wife, who's a veterinarian. I'm involved in Rotary Club, the hospice, and I'm a member of the Hillsdale Economic Development Corporation, deeply committed to this community and want to see it prosper and grow, and want to voice my support for this project at Three Meadows. I believe that Hillsdale is desperately in need of housing, and ultimately, because we're really not unique, the reality is that there is a nationwide housing shortage, part of the reason why we're seeing the highest interest rates we've seen since two thousand and eight, and there's still pretty massive demand for, for housing. And want to bring attention to some data from Michigan Growth Advisors, that only two percent of the housing units here in Hillsdale have been built after two thousand and ten, and approximately fifty-eight percent of our housing units were built prior to nineteen seventy. In two thousand and twenty-two, our vacancy rate was only point nine percent, which was a forty-three-point-eight percent drop over the preceding five years. So the reality is that our community just does not have enough homes. We have low vacancy rates, and the homes we do have are aging and require additional maintenance. I contest that myself. My home was built in eighteen eighty-eight, and it has been a working project, to say the least. And, well, I don't mind it. You know, I don't have kids yet. I've got the time and the energy to do it. Reality is, people looking to move to this community don't want to buy a fixer-up. They want to have a nice new home to work in, to raise their family in, a nice neighborhood to, to raise their kids in. And we don't have a neighborhood like this with these new homes that ultimately, they're not gonna be just carbon copies of each other. It's gonna be a beautiful neighborhood that ideally is gonna help expand upon the homes that are already out there. You know, certainly there's a need for lots of housing in the community of all different price ranges, but I do think we need to be mindful of the houses that are currently out there at the Three Meadows and try to maintain certain standards that has already been created out there. And additionally, I think, at the end of the day, we aren't making any tax revenue off that land right now anyway. And so I think if we're gonna bring in a developer that's willing to invest the money to build all that infrastructure in there and take on that risk, then, you know, let's cut them slack for a little while. And at the end of the day, Hillsdale's eventually gonna get that tax revenue, but I think ultimately then we're gonna build houses that are gonna attract people here. We constantly have people looking to come in and work at the college, at the hospital. There's constantly demand for jobs at those different employers. But one of the biggest complaints is that there just aren't houses, nice new houses for those people who move into. So I think there absolutely is a need for this in the community, and I'd like to voice my support for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Any more public comment?
Hi, counsel. Dominic Stansum. I'd like to encourage you to vote against this resolution. I think that the question again comes down to the median income of this town being about fifty thousand dollars, and us looking to put in homes ever worth twenty, two hundred and eighty thousand to three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Again, I, I don't know where all these people are with families, as a man with a family, who have this eighty-three thousand dollar median income. I certainly don't, again, I don't know anybody who does. And I think that there are certainly homes in town, yes, perhaps, that need some work. But when you put that work in, you're not only raising the value of that property, but the value of the properties around you as well. This town can be revitalized, it can be beautified, it can be improved upon when people invest money in the town. I don't think you need to go and build another sixty-one houses by a development that makes over eight hundred houses a year. I'm sure it will be a nice community, but there are nice communities in this town, and I think that we can improve upon them without bringing someone in, subsidizing them and having them, rather not subsidizing them, but not having them pay tax money for the foreseeable future, however long, while there are homes that are in this town that can be bought, that can be made better, and that can make this entire town better. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any more public comment?
Hi, Mattness, Ward Three. First, start with two questions. First, I think I heard you answer this, but it wasn't clear. I wanna know the purchase price for this land, see if that's just being given or what the amount is. And I also wonder what the fire department thinks about adding sixty homes on the other side of a bridge they can't drive under, having to drive around. I looked it up on Google, and it was about a twelve-minute drive, which seems like a long time to get to a fire if that, if that was to happen. I'm also very concerned about, we were, all right, three, two or three meetings ago, we were told that the city's roads are in terrible shape, and that we don't, we have to charge, therefore we have to charge people five thousand dollars to fix their roads. But we, right now, we wanna add more, more roads. I know that, I know those roads will be paid for upfront. We wanna add more residents without the city collecting tax revenue for those residents. Dino rides, right, at a hundred thousand dollar loss. We pay for parks and rec, police and fire, and my understanding is the corporation will be able to collect the tax money, and the city won't give that for twenty-five years. If we were concerned about workforce housing, true workforce housing these days, which is smaller homes, maybe before three months ago, we would have reduced the minimum housing size to make homes in Hillsdale affordable. We did that three months ago, you guys and I, as part of planning commission. We should look at other ways to build homes within the city where services already exist, so we don't have to plow more roads for free and add to those expenses for the city. I also think twenty, any, any deal, any tax deal of twenty-five years is, is extreme. Most of us, a lot of us won't be here in twenty-five years, for whatever reason, whether we move on or otherwise. So we shouldn't, we shouldn't consider those extreme tax deals. It's excessive, and it puts a burden on us for a long, long time. So I'd appreciate it if you go and know on the tax deal.
Thank you, Mattness. Any more public comment?
CJ Tonner, for Ward Three. Um, yeah, the, the tax abatement for twenty-five years, we keep being told that we don't have money for roads, yet we're going to use our, our taxes. And being somebody that has multiple rentals and oversees multiple properties, the prices that he was talking about is a, within the market of what normal rentals are, not in my market. We're, I, we don't have anything up that high. Nice homes, but nobody, when we do list something in that price range, we don't get any activity on it at all. So, and they're very nice. So my question is, does it make any sense to do tax abatement? I, I agree that we need some housing and that we need to bring in some more businesses in, but I don't think that this price point or this market is what Hillsdale needs unless we, I mean, who wants to move here and drive on these roads? So that's all I have to say.
CJ, one moment, please. How many properties do you manage?
A hundred.
What's your, do you have a, off the top of your head, what's about the average rent that you charge?
Probably, I mean, I have everything from multiple, you know, eight, an eight-year all the way down to single-family homes. And they are, they vary in amenities, but our higher end, our higher end, our middle is probably twelve to fourteen hundred dollars a month. And those are like three to four better. So.
Christian Winter, Ward One. So we have a number of good contractors in Hillsdale County who are local and do good work, still construction, for example. They've decided that this work, this kind of development, is not profitable enough for them to build. Why? Those in town who know the city and community know the market better than those who do not live and work here. Further, if we are to build new homes, it'd be much better for the city to find an arrangement with one of these local contractors to keep the money in town rather than with some larger out-of-town developer. Thank you.
Thank you, Christian.
Hey, my name is Russell, Ward Four. First, I wanna apologize for the way I'm dressed. That's why you're up there and I'm down here. I'm in the middle of doing one of those renovations that Sam is talking about. So I'm covered in drywall paint here, 'cause I, 'cause I do think that there's a way to improve the current housing that we have in Hillsdale. But even if there's not, e- even if the argument is a given that we need more housing, I don't think it has been proven clearly that this is the right approach. I'm on EDC as well. I'm young, went behind the years, probably made a bunch of my EDC fellow board members upset with the questions I was asking at our first meeting about this, or the first meeting that I was a participant in. But I, I struggle to, to, to be convinced that this does anything to solve the actual supply, the missing supply. It's been stated that the average income, household income in Hillsdale is eighty thousand. That number makes no sense to me. I just looked up on michigan.gov, the average in the state of Michigan is sixty thousand. So we're supposed to believe that Hillsdale's twenty K higher than the rest of the state? That doesn't make any sense to me. As far as I understand it, and I'm a transplant, I've been here for six years, but I love the city, and I want to see the city grow in an organic, good way. I think it's the best place to raise a family. I think it's the best place to live. That's why I choose to live here. But in order for that, those things to remain the case, we need to make sure we're building, we're, we're using this one opportunity. Hillsdale's a small town of seven thousand people. We have one lot primed for development, and it seems like without your paws, we're gonna be building homes that ninety percent of the community can't afford. That seems like a wonder on first base to me. We have one shot to do this well. We should think through that. We should make sure that we're actually meeting a real need. I agree with the, the argument that we should use local contractors. I, I, if, if the developers open to that, I think that would be a great thing. I'm generally skeptical of using government subsidies to incentivize behavior that private citizens could and should be doing. I mean, the argument that there is strong demand would be proven if there were multiple developers lining up to bid on this deal. Are there multiple developers? Have they offered similar deals? Is this the only offer on the table? What does that communicate about the demand? So, and, and I, I think the biggest argument is there's an opportunity cost if we go with a high-income-only housing development, and that might cause us to miss fire. And I think the town of Hillsdale deserves better than that. So thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, Russell.
My name's David. I moved here ten years ago when I was in the Army to come to school. My wife and I fell in love with this place. We had a family. We found a rental in town. It's a very old house, kinda like some others we've described. We found it very charming. In fact, we loved this place because of that.
My name's David, I moved here ten years ago when I was in the Army to come to school. My wife and I fell in love with this place, we had a family, we found a rental in town, it's a very old house, kind of like some others we've described. We found it very charming, in fact, we loved this place because of that, because of the community we had. It was a home owned by a citizen of the town, it was maintained by a citizen of the town, and it was a great place to come. And we, we came back here three years ago, after, had more time in the Army, to live here, to, to raise a family, and I was profiting here with this development. To me, I'm not an economist like some of you all, but I did study politics, and this seems like the very definition of run seeking. And I make, I would echo the arguments that have been made about, there is really a demand for this, there's a clean market for this. Great, company wants to make an investment on, and profit from it, I have no objection to that. It seems crazy, though, to add subsidies for it. And also, I'll say, in my time in the Army, I lived in a lot of cookie-cutter neighborhoods like this, that were reported to be beautiful. The homes are often cheaply constructed, there's a lot of cut corners that are cut by mass home builders, I've experienced that firsthand, owned some of those homes and regretted it. Twenty-five years, I'd be impressed if these houses last that long, to be honest. And I don't, I don't know the value of their homes or how they build it, but I'm skeptical of cookie-cutter neighborhoods, and I would echo a commentator previous meeting that one of the charms of Hillsdale is that we, we live in a, it's a, it's a very conservative community, and it's a community that has a lot of beautiful homes that can be reclaimed, and this seems to be out of step with that. So I'd encourage you to vote against it. Thanks.
Thank you, David.
Sam Angus, Ward three, I believe I was the author of the previous mentioned comment. I am very reluctant to say anything here and commit an act of ignorance. It sounds like a lot of work has gone into thinking about this and crunching the numbers to figure out whether this is affordable and so on. The gentleman's presentation was very good, very impressive, these seem like they're, in a way, well-built houses, I'm sure he knows his business, and, you know, maybe this is a good development, maybe these houses would sell, maybe it's necessary. I, I would echo all of the comments to the effect that, you know, it, it's a little hard to believe that if the demand is that high, it's impossible to make it happen on its own. You know, I, again, I've seen the numbers to be sure on that, so maybe, maybe that's the case. If that's the case, it seems a shame. You know, the, the gentleman in his presentation said that these are beautiful houses, beauty is in the eye of the beholder, and I wouldn't begrudge anyone who wanted to buy one of those houses, could afford it, and was thrilled to move in. One feature that seems unbeautiful to me, that wouldn't draw me to buy them, is the enormous, very forward-facing garages that tell me these are houses, the places where people drive everywhere and go straight into their house through a side door from the garage instead of in the front door, and don't want a porch where they can sit and talk to their neighbors. That seems a shame, and it seems very unbeautiful behavior. It is unfortunately modern, or nearly ubiquitous behavior, but it's not the way most of these towns, most of the houses in this town were built. This is, this is a town of an old enough nature that the houses tell you that people sit out front and talk to each other, and maybe walk places. Some people do, and some people don't, but we, you know, it would be nice if we would think of housing in that humane and relational way, and if the city is going to give tax incentives for things, which do cost money, we're not writing any checks, but tax breaks are a cost, why not find ways that we can use that to incentivize local builders and local homeowners to, I don't know, tear down a condemned house on a lot that is an absolute eyesore and a blight? And build a new house right there in architectural style that fits the existing town, and makes the town beautiful, and one lot at a time revives the town, instead of just dumping twenty-six new ones that could be in any town from Maine to San Diego, right on the edge of town. You know, I, I, or we could do both of those, I don't know that they're mutually exclusive, but, all right.
Any more public comment? Okay, we'll close the podium. Counsel, Dave, you got something to add?
Sam does. Sam Frye, the Economic Development Coordinator, had something he wanted to say.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so just, just to kind of recap what we're doing here tonight with this resolution to approve the Brownfield Plan. As, you know, Brian gave a very nice outline of this project and what this is, we do have a Brownfield redevelopment plan before us to consider. Like you said, you know, this plan would be, this project would be built out in multiple phases over a couple of years, and result in sixty-two, or sixty-one, excuse me, new single-family detached homes, when all phases of the project have been completed. Just to kind of go back a little bit and provide some context, as it was mentioned earlier, the Economic Development Corporation of the city has owned this current parcel of property, which is about twenty-two acres, since two thousand and six. And so, since that time, they have made many repeated efforts to try to find a developer. They did sell off lots in Phase One, individual lots, it was a very long painstaking process, and ultimately, they were not, you know, selling it at a rate that would result in completion of the subdivision. And then specifically for these two parcels, the five-acre parcel that has already been developed into the duplexes, as well as this project for the twenty-two remaining acres, this land was listed with Christie Clemens, a local Realtor, it was listed for several years. And so, shortly before this project took place, the EDC did sell another eighteen acres out there in Three Meadows to a, a local individual who was interested in building a few homes. But the offer that we had received from Alan Edwin, to do the duplexes in the first part, and to do the second phase of the project, the EDC overwhelmingly felt that that was the best offering, because this builder has the capacity to actually do the project. You know, it was always the goal of the EDC to see that land eventually sell, and to see the subdivision finish building out, you know, consistent with, with the original plan from ninety-nine. So, you know, there were local developers who, who had looked at it, ultimately, they, you know, they passed on it, because the reality is, very few local developers have the ability to front, you know, two million dollars for infrastructure and carry all of the costs, you know, that they would require financed with something of this scale. So having a developer like Alan Edwin, the EDC felt was, was the best way to see the subdivision be built out. And, you know, as a reminder, it was about a year ago when, when this council had approved Phase One of the project, where we used a, a workforce pilot for the duplexes, and, and we received feedback at the time that one of the things that was really wanted and desired by council and the community was more for-sale, market-rate housing. So that was feedback that, that the EDC and the developer took to come up with this concept, which would, you know, be eighty percent for-sale market rate, because there was a desire for that in the community. And so with this Brownfield request, or with the Brownfield Plan approval, you know, they're requesting reimbursement for eligible activities that are allowed by Act 381. So I want to emphasize, I think it's important to understand with this Brownfield TIF, what's actually taking place is the TIF reimburses those eligible expenses through property tax revenues generated by this development project itself, and only this project. So that financing structure means that this project would not be subsidized by current tax revenues or existing revenue streams that the city has. So essentially, by using this TIF, it allows us to create a new revenue stream for the city and attain fifteen million dollars in capital investment that otherwise wouldn't take place. And so when you, when you look at it from that point of view, it's also important to note that using the same TIF structure, it allows the city to shift the risk associated with, with the project and the financing from the city to the developer, because if they don't actually build the homes and sell it, there's no incremental increase in property tax revenues, and they don't get reimbursed. Whereas traditionally, with a development like this, the EDC or the city would have to come up with two million dollars to build out the infrastructure, to make these sites billable. That was something that was, it was tried early on in the Three Meadows project, and ultimately, the city got left on the hook. So we, we feel that strongly, that, you know, it's, it's not, it's not prudent or in the best interest of the city to assume that risk, to put that on the taxpayers, which is why, you know, we specifically looked at this Brownfield tool. And it's why it's the right tool to see this kind of project over the finish line. So, you know, I know it was mentioned before, you know, kind of why now, you know, why other developers may have passed. We have new tools now, as it was mentioned, you know, expanding the Brownfield Redevelopment Financing Act to include eligible housing cost activities is something that's new. And also, this project requires a developer that has the capacity to actually build out this number of homes, to put in the infrastructure, and to front all those costs. You know, again, the current taxable value of the property is zero dollars, because it's owned by the EDC, which is tax-exempt. Because it's been owned by the EDC for the past twenty years, the city hasn't received any taxable, any tax revenue whatsoever on this property. So really, what we're looking at at the end of the day is taking a property that's currently not on the tax rolls, putting it back on the tax rolls. The EDC will also, this will complete the sale of their final land out there in Three Meadows, which I know has long been a goal of, of the mayor and his council and others, to, to see the city sell its vacant land, to complete those projects and, and, and kind of eliminate that issue for us. So this would accomplish both of those purposes. In year twenty-five, it's estimated that the taxable value of this development for the city will be eleven million dollars approximately. So going from taxable value in the parcel to zero, from zero to eleven million dollars means the city will receive two hundred, about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars in tax revenue every year in perpetuity from this project. So I think that's important to consider. What we're asking tonight, the EDC has worked on this project for years, as I mentioned, it's gone through two separate boards, you know, the EDC has worked specifically with Alan Edwin for over two years, between Phase One and this project, and negotiating a purchase agreement for the land. And then the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority reviewed and considered the, the, the Brownfield Plan that we have in front of us, and they did recommend its approval to council. So, you know, I just want to emphasize that there's a lot of work that went into this, like we said, there are a lot of numbers that were crunched from the developers, city staff invested a lot of time into making sure that we felt that this was a financially sound investment for the city, that has long-term benefits to us from an economic perspective, building our tax base up, getting a parcel back on the tax rolls, while also kind of mitigating that critical housing shortage that we are seeing here in the community. So with that being said, it is the recommendation to go ahead and adopt the Brownfield Plan as presented. I'll be happy to answer any questions from council, or if there are questions that specifically are directed to the developer, we can ask those at the time.
Thank you, Sam. I have a question, like this stupid one, but it's something that's confused me about this. So my understanding, which I think is a pretty good understanding of tax increment financing, is that the taxes are frozen at a certain level. Each year when they rise, the increments are what are caught for whatever, a TIF of fund, or in this case, they would go towards the developer. But the tax revenue out there is zero currently. So what are we freezing the taxes at? What's, what's the amount they're going to be? So is, is it going to be when we sell them the property, there's going to be a signed amount of tax revenue?
So, so how the, yeah, so what you're right about is currently, the taxable value of the property is zero dollars, because it's owned by the EDC. Now, they're going to put in the infrastructure, you know, they're going to make that two million dollar investment before they, they see, you know, a penny of reimbursement. But what happens is, when they start building and ultimately selling the homes, that increases the taxable value of the property. So in the Brownfield Plan, it's in the packet, you'll see there's a table, and it breaks down the increase in taxable value on a per-year basis. So as that taxable value continues to climb for the property, the tax increment, in, in essence, the difference between the zero dollars and what the new value of the property is, that's the amount that gets captured by the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority and goes towards reimbursing those eligible activities outlined in the plan.
So the part that's captured by the city is the taxable value as set by our assessors?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, any questions for Sam? Councilman Beer?
Sam, when was the, oh, let's see, when was Three Meadows Project actually begun? The origi, the original date?
Nineteen ninety-nine.
Nineteen ninety-nine, that was when the city went and purchased the land?
No, so at the time, there was a private developer, who was interested in building it out, and they worked on the project from ninety-nine to two thousand and six. For that project, the city actually did pay to install the infrastructure for Phase One. So if you look at the houses that are currently out there, the, the twelve houses, they put in the roads and the water and the sewer for that. Ultimately, the developer walked away from the project, and so the city had to basically eat that loss of the money that they had spent up putting in the infrastructure.
Do you know what the cost on that was?
Um, I'd, I'd have to go back and look, but I, I know it was, do you have an idea?
It was several hundred thousand dollars at that time?
Correct.
Because it was actually funded through the BPU and it was written off, oh, for their, putting their power and water and stuff in?
Yeah. It was at least two hundred and fifty thousand, minimum.
And, and currently, the city is receiving nothing, zero?
Correct. That's right.
This developer's going to come in and spend one point eight million dollars to put the infrastructure to actually allow for lots to be sold, or he's going to put the home in and then, and he's going to assume a hundred percent of the risk.
That's correct.
So the, the city would only be out, say, said developer, just being devil's advocate, say they put the one point seven million in, and it doesn't pan out like they foresee, and so the city ends up with lots on a, the infrastructure on a road that are now more sellable. And I'm not, I, I, I don't see any risk on the city, and from the standpoint that they're going to do all the hard work putting in the infrastructure. And another thing to consider too, though, because people are saying, well, the city won't receive anything for, well, they keep saying twenty-five years, and I don't really get to twenty-five, but I'm saying, in the, I'm saying twenty years. Is it twenty-five or twenty?
Yeah, so, so what I would, what I would ultimately say too is, so the, the number in there, that's the most conservative estimate, right? That's, that's based on how long we think it's going to take to pay back those reimbursed costs, if they're building, let's say, you know, I think Brian said the pace is approximately about ten homes a year. Now, you know, if they pre-sell these homes and, and the demand is significant, they're a home builder that obviously can scale up and, and build more than ten a year, and so if they complete the project early, they can get actually reimbursed, you know, before the twenty-year mark, potentially. So what, what we presented to council is the worst-case scenario, that's the longest potentially that, that it would take to reimburse them, but there's, there's a good chance it could be shorter.
So there's no direct money being paid to the developers by that city? Correct.
So the, the tax revenues from this project are going to go to reimburse them from the homes? So there's, there's no money from the city's general fund, there's no capital outlay from the city, no existing revenue streams are being impacted anyway?
But, but another thing to consider too, is the fact that actually, the city will receive something in the twenty years once they put the homes in, because if I'm not mistaken, we do own the BPU, and we receive, is it a six percent pilot? Is it six percent?
That's correct.
Okay. So these homes are going to be using our power, our water, our sewer, and so the city is going to benefit from a higher usage, I would think, and still get some money, but at the end, you're looking at, they've had this, well, from the, the EDC, from year two thousand and six, so eighteen years, and we're receiving zero dollars. And then you have a developer come in and want to spend this kind of money and create more customers for our BPU. I, I have really, I, I have to struggle on why this wouldn't be a good thing. And currently, one of the reasons that we have the issues where we have to do the SADs in this community to address the road situations is because our tax base is so low for the size and the number of miles of roads that we have. And looking down further on a, like you said, I, I won't be here in twenty-five years, but I want the people in twenty-five years to have a better tax base, a better housing market, newer homes, I think it's, it's so much more of a win-win. And when you're, aren't talking about a huge financial commitment from the city. That's all I have, Sam.
Thank you, Tony. Counsel, what?
Just a couple of things. One is that in, in Brian's presentation, when you saw the, the diagram, the existing tax base, it was that blue rectangle, but the existing tax base is zero.
Yes.
So all the, all the increased tax base is going to be going to reimburse the, the developer. And if you look at the Michigan Growth Um, and if you look at the Michigan Growth Advisor's, uh, analysis, the infrastructure improvements that they're going to make is one point seven seven nine million. But there's another three point six two four million, which is the affordable housing financing gap, um, which is going to basically reimburse them for having a lower rent. Um, and there's another, uh, one point three million dollars in interest uh, that they're going to be reimbursed for. From that side, you get to the seven million dollars. And so I just wanted to, you know, make it clear that, I know Brian did a nice job up there, but the blue rectangle is zero, uh, when we're looking at the, the, at the tax increment financing. Uh, and, um, so you won't be receiving any tax revenue for twenty-five years. Uh, just so that we're aware of the fact that there's no tax revenue coming from the sixty-two housing unit. Um, and if they don't sell the houses, then they can rent them. So that this may not be all single-family owned homes.
You just told me that the blue part, the taxable, was going to be the taxable value set by our assessor. Gary's saying that it's going to be zero, that's the question that I was asking, just a couple of minutes. Is it, are we going to get anything from it or not?
So I, I understand your question now. So right, right now, there's zero dollars taxable value.
Yes.
So if you, if you were to go back to that graph or whatever, there, there wouldn't necessarily be that small blue box for this project. But what happens is they get fully reimbursed for the entire increase from zero, like I said, to, you know, whatever the taxable value is as they build that parcel out. So full tax capture for that twenty years goes to reimburse them for their costs. Once their costs are fully reconvert, fully reimbursed, then that full tax revenue that we would get on, you know, eleven million dollars taxable property goes to the city, goes back on the general tax rolls. I, I think I'm understanding what, what you're asking.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm sorry for interrupting here.
Yeah, but I'm also correct that, is that, is that not correct? That if they don't sell the houses, that they can rent them?
I'll, I'll, I'll let Brian answer that. It's, it's their, their plan is to sell them. You're right, I'll speak to.
Yeah. Thank you. Excellent question. Uh, Councilman Walfrum. Um, so the, the, the plan right now and the plan going forward is to sell the homes first. That's the first option. We're going to be outlaying, uh, the one point eight million dollars. So what we want to have is if we build these homes for, you know, what we have to build them for, if they're not selling, we need to have an off-ramp to make ourselves comfortable with putting that capital at risk. So it is in no way a bait and switch. We're going to build these houses and come on the market for one day. We're going to, we have a sales team of, I think, fifty sales professionals that work for Allen Edwin Homes. Um, it's better for us financially to get our capital back immediately than to have them leased up. But this provides us to do it, and we do it in different communities. It allows us to, when, if we do a for-rent community, we like to do it all for rent or a substantial portion of it in one block group. It's easier to maintain, it's easier to manage. What we can do in, uh, communities like this that we're developing is we'll do one here, one there, one there. It allows us to offload a house that's not selling. Um, so Copper Bay would buy it and then lease it up. Uh, but it is kind of a, think of it as an off-ramp, um, that we can use.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't want to imply that that's what you were going to do.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that the council is aware of that's, that's a possibility. Um, and for some reason, these houses aren't selling.
Yeah.
Um, then they would end up being rented.
If you test the whole. And I think we had some technical corrections. If I call on Joe real quick.
Could I just clarify two points, uh, if I could? Uh, the first being the duration of the Brownfield Plan. Uh, you're correct that the Brownfield Plan is twenty-five years. The reimbursement to the developer, however, is only twenty years. I want to make sure everybody understands that the final five years of the Brownfield Plan is written to allow the city's Brownfield Redevelopment Authority to capture into its local Brownfield Revolving Fund, which would allow it to invest in whatever other projects it would like to in the future. So just wanted to clarify that. And the second point would be in that hypothetical scenario, uh, councilman that you raised of, i- if any of these were to convert to rental properties, uh, that would actually shorten the duration of the Brownfield Plan. So the, the Brownfield Plan's a, a function of the taxes that are generated. We're making an assumption here that eighty percent of the homes, uh, developed will be subject to homestead exemption, therefore not paying the eighteen mil school, uh, uh, school operating tax. Uh, if they were rental property, they would not be homestead. That would mean more taxes being paid and then paying back the eligibility more quickly. And so I just wanted to add those two clarifying questions.
Also, Paul.
You said more taxes being paid, but is Alan Edwin going to pay the taxes to the city if they're rented?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
The owner of whoever it be, the property today is, uh, would be the owner of, of those homes and subject to paying the taxes.
At the full tax rate?
Full, yeah, because they, they wouldn't be owner occupied if they were rented, so they wouldn't have a homestead exemption.
And those taxes wouldn't be captured by Alan Edwin?
They would be captured by the Brownfield Plan, and they would therefore, uh, you would, um, pay back the same dollar amount more quickly, therefore shortening the duration of the Brownfield Plan.
Okay, yeah, but whether they're sold or rented, Alan Edwin is going to collect the tax increment?
The Brownfield Authority would collect it and make a payment to Alan Edwin.
Yes. Correct. Um, how long will the homes be on the market before they're rented?
Um, I actually just talked to my boss about this this morning on, on the way in. It's a function of what time of year we're in. So we start three homes a day, we want to sell three homes a day on average. This time of year, uh, we're seeing homes on the market for longer because people don't want to move before Thanksgiving. Uh, so spring to summer, we expect the homes to sell faster. Um, we're actually seeing, is people are contacting the city, looking if they can buy sites already. Um, so I think we wouldn't want to have it be on the market for over a year. Um, we don't like to take care of homes that are finished over a year. We start homes, when we dig the basement, they're, they're available for sale immediately, so they can be pre-sold. We can finish them to specs, but this is not going to be like a, a one month and we stop them. We, we want these to sell first before we can renew the rentals.
There's no contractual requirement of keeping them, them on the market for a certain period?
No. Short answer, simple answer.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other council?
Brian, could you just comment on, um, the fact that the project is phased in? You're not, I just want to make clear that you're not planning on building sixty-one homes or starting them in the first year? As you've proposed, it's ten homes a year?
Yep. So what we're looking to do is ten homes a year, which is an absorption rate of less than one per month, which we're very comfortable with, uh, to make this plan work. Uh, and so if we see an uptick in our absorption rate faster than that, we can turn our dial up and, and build faster, which again would shorten the TIF. I think one thing that's, that's, I'd like to point out is that we're all incentivized to shorten the TIF to the shortest amount of time possible. If we can have this cycle reproduce, and I want to point out, the, the TIF table is built out of a one percent inflation rate assumption. So the TIF table is a projection. If we have inflation higher than that, if the cash flow back to the companies faster, that will shorten the TIF. Um, but today's point, um, right now, kind of our baseline to make this work within the twenty years is ten homes a year for sale. If, uh, we have to convert some to rental, that'll accelerate the repayment. If we build out, you know, the first couple of years, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen homes a year, that'll allow more homes to hit the tax rolls and it'll pay back the city faster.
Any other questions, couples?
Yes.
We, um, first of all, I want to correct, there's eight two-hundred residents in the city of Hillsborough on seven thousand. Let's get those figures straight, so, you know, let's do the fact checks if we have to. We hit offer of the college, a million dollar home, they build up there on Manning Street. You got fifty percent of the tax value for the next, I believe, twelve years. So we have done something for the college too. Um, we do need housing in this town, there is a lack of it. We also have Aldi's coming. Myers right now is bringing employees from other stores to fill the lack of work, workers here. The college, and within three years, will build a hotel. They're going to need at least a hundred employees. Maybe someday the Kiefer House will be done, and they'll need employees there. There is a growth here, there is demand. Where do we get the workers? Are they going to drive from Adrian, Jackson, other colonies to come here and work if the, the wage is small? No, they're not. Mike, I'm glad you answered that you only going to build ten at a time, and you're going to see if you can sell them. I don't want to see a whole bunch of homes just sitting there. But the land's set there for all this time, and we're not collecting any tax revenue on it. Here we have a chance to do something. I mean, Hillsborough's stayed small, but we've got to grow a little bit. We can't stay a hundred years back. We take three steps forward, then we take ten steps backwards? No. We continue, but we use it as a smart pace, we pay attention to what's going on. Some of these houses, yeah, two hundred and sixty thousand dollars, that's way beyond me, way beyond my price range. I am retired now, but I still, between my wife and I, we make that over eighty thousand dollars. But I've worked for every penny I've earned, and that's through hard work. And I've been in Hillsborough, I've seen what's going on. Yes, there's a concern about the fire department getting there. That is up to the railroad, which they claim they're going to fix the bridge in two years. That is the claim they're making. So there is a vision in works. Can we connect off of Bacon? No, because that's different property that we can't get into, and we have to stay away from it. I am all for this because right now that property's bringing us nothing. Same way up there on Manning Street, the one with the million dollar home. It was, uh, three hundred dollars is what they collected a year off taxes on it, well, nothing was there. Now they're getting eighty-eight hundred dollars. Do the math. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Councilor Pella deal?
Uh, who will pay for the maintenance of the infrastructure during the twenty-five-year TIF period?
What, what infrastructure specifically are you talking about? This, the roads, roads electric? So I, I think, and, and Dave can add, add some to this too, but the city will receive some Act Fifty-One monies, um, for those roads. But also when you look at brand-new infrastructure being, being installed, the useful life of that infrastructure will far exceed the payback period. So it's not going to be a net drain in terms of having to maintain that during the period of repayment of the TIF.
Um, we were told last meeting that within fifteen to twenty years, a road is, uh, essentially ready to be rebuilt.
I'm not sure if that was a reference to brand-new infrastructure, maintaining what's currently there. If we resurface it, I don't know.
Is Jason still?
I don't know, Jason could, could shine some light on it, but.
So to, to address Sam's comment about Act Fifty-One, um, Jason, the city engineer did some checking to see, um, to, to give us a kind of an amount that we'll receive uh, for adding that mileage to our Act Fifty-One map. Um, we think it's going to be somewhere between five to six thousand dollars a year to maintain that road. Uh, we won't have much maintenance on it until year eight, you thought, crack filled?
Yes, sir, about year five to eight, we'll start the first crack fill on it. Um, probably year twelve to fifteen, put a chip seal on it, continue with overbank crack scene as well. And then with the amount of traffic there, you should be able to get to twenty-five, thirty, because the only thing big is when you back there is trash trucks. After everything's built, the road's done, it's very local traffic. Um, twenty-five years would be a good assessment on this.
Thank you, Jason. Uh, do you know the approximate cost of, uh, crack filling, uh, chip sealing during that twenty-five-year period?
Um, so crack fill through that area there, and I'm talking the whole subdivision back there, you're probably fourteen hundred dollars for application. Uh, chip seal, probably close to seven, eight thousand dollars every five to eight years on average. Um, there, the, uh, amount of Act Fifty-One money we're looking at getting is going to be about six thousand dollars on average a year.
Okay.
Um, so over twenty years, we definitely just recoup that cost.
Okay, and then, um.
So I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, no, please.
Um, the one thing I hear that's different on some of the other subdivision is this one we have, we're very much with, uh, um, Allen or Holmes, too. Everything will be up to M. spec on this, the curb, the gutter, the street. It's not going to be a private street build, if you will, it's going to be up to a street standard.
So could we expect a total reconstruction in twenty-five years?
If we can keep it more than that with the street, with the local volume, we shouldn't need it. We can do a two-inch mill at that time, too, try to get that to thirty, to thirty-two years.
And what's the cost of that?
So a two-inch over mill? Oh, yeah, they asked me that. You're probably looking at a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty thousand for the whole, I'm talking whole subdivision.
Okay, and if that's successful, what is your timeframe for a total reconstruct?
Um, thirty, probably thirty-five years, thirty-five, forty. It all depends on the subbase energy.
Okay.
So we'd have to get some core samples out there and go from there, but, uh, with what we've seen on the other roads, there are many grounds, but then they're already twenty years old now.
Okay, and the cost of the total reconstruction by, in today's numbers, in, in thirty to thirty-five years?
To do the whole thing? Um, if it's just.
Well, I, I, I want to interrupt on this question, my question. Jason, we, we really can't answer this question because if you're basing it off what we're replacing now in the city, we're replacing infrastructure that was built in South Park.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, so we're replacing water and sewer lines that were, you know, I don't even know how old, um, like on, uh, Westwood. When was that built up, Jason?
Thirties, late thirties, forties.
Yeah, so we're replacing that infrastructure.
Sixties, actually, no, it's.
Eighty years into it. So given a number, what, what we're building to the standards today is much higher than, than what we have in the past. So it's difficult to actually give you an accurate number.
Yeah.
Yeah, yes.
So thank you, Ian, that's where I was going to put, the next was, because we're only talking about putting it on the top, if you will. Um, everything under ground to different scenarios, that's where I should have given it a second.
Okay.
We have, I mean, we're talking surface maintenance, so the dollars are, you know, substantially less.
Okay, and so then we wouldn't expect a total reconstruction like we have for, you know, Monroe area, et cetera?
Absolutely, with new plastic water main, ductile, you know, everything that is available to us. Seven years ago, we had wooden water main, you know, cast iron, orange burst, pipe, all that stuff has, has been on the market. It's way better than the system we have now.
Uh, do you have an approximate cost for plowing, dial-a-ride, police and fire services for this area? I'm sorry, some of that's out of your.
No, so I, I can definitely, um, the, the winter maintenance, so right now, back there, because our trucks can't get through, we do all of them with one ton trucks. It takes a long time to do one-ton trucks, because you're pretty much just pushing, pushing, pushing to call the stacks. Thing gets opened up, at least on our end, for most of it, our big trucks will be able to go through there and wipe that out and get that time down to, to significantly less plow time than we have now. Because we use our big trucks to just swing through there.
Okay, but we are going to be providing for these, uh, services?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, um, this is, so the uneasy, what, what is that about a sixty percent tax reduction?
Fifty.
Fifty, thank you, Kim. Um, yeah, that, that structure seems to make a little bit more sense, though I still opposed all of them. But, um, at least there, we're sort of covering the cost of adding new residents. We sort of have, have this idea, similar actually to the federal government, that we can add millions of new residents, except here it would be hundreds. Um, and there's no new cost to the city, so we, we're not taking on a new risk. But if we just take sixty homes at average occupancy of four, we're talking about two hundred and forty new residents, that has a cost, right? Uh, every new resident is more strain on city services, uh, more, um, strain on roads, you know, more, more travel. Um, so I think this idea that it's basically free to add new citizens actually isn't correct. And actually, what, what the cost of a citizen is represented by the general tax rate, that's what we say, a citizen cost to add to the city.
I just want to address that.
Yes, please, thank you.
Okay. Property taxes are only part of our revenue stream?
Uh, absolutely, Kim.
Our state shared revenue, a part of that calculation is based on population. So when you add residents, we do get more money through the state shared revenue.
Right, but my, again, we're not able to pay for our current needs with our current residents who pay both property taxes and receive state.
Right, I just.
Yes, right, we get the Act Fifty-One money, it's totally insufficient, the state is ripping us off, all granted. Um, okay, I have a bunch more, but I will pass it on, uh, for a minute if anyone else has anything to add to this. Keep going. Um, another concern is, and actually I'm glad you're up here, would be the Headley Amendment. Um, so we're projecting two twenty-five right now, but if we have a general recession in the next twenty-five years, which I know we can say the housing market's stable, but no economist would predict what's going to happen twenty-five years in the future, um, we could see a very sharp reduction in the taxable value of these homes. And as we've seen, uh, it would take decades potentially to recoup that, that loss at a five percent gain per year, assuming the maximum allowed under law. Um, I, I, I think I was talking to you about this. We just met our two thou, our pre-two thousand and eight taxable value in the last, what? Seven, eight years, something like that? It took almost a decade. So this is another concern. We're projecting out what the valid, what the taxable value is going to be in the future, but we actually don't know what the, the condition of these homes will be in twenty-five years. And we also don't know, uh, whether there will be a general decline in housing values in the city over that period. uh, whether there will be a general decline in housing values in the city over that period.
Those are valid concerns, those are, as you stated, we can't predict the future.
Can I, uh, add a little context? So the brownfield plan by statute cannot run any longer than thirty years, uh, with the final five years reserved to the local brownfield revolving fund, so really what we're, uh, the point you're raising is the difference between the twenty that we're projecting up to a maximum of twenty-five to the developer. Um, and that's the risk that they're taking. You're absolutely right, if, if we miss the target on future taxable value here, and this project generates a lot less tax increment than anticipated, uh, they, the developer has a big financial problem. The deal will be developed, they just will have not made any money on the transaction. Um, and then I just wanna add one point on the, the, uh, questioning or concerns around, uh, rebuilding of the infrastructure. Uh, it's important to note that the local brownfield revolving fund, that's gonna have about two point one million dollars in it in year twenty, based on our current projections, could be used to fund all that infrastructure work that, um, that you're talking about, that would be an eligible.
Thank you, that's very helpful. Um, yeah, I appreciate that you're considering your risk. I'm wondering, year twenty-five, we see a, you know, a forty percent reduction in total home values across the city or something like that. All of the sudden, this projected revenue will be substantially decreased, uh, as at least a possible concern. Um, I have a question about the vacancy rate in twenty twenty-two. Um, I think most people who have lived here know that the vacancy rate in twenty twenty-two is not uh, a good sample size for the city of Hillsdale. I don't know if, in my ten years, we've ever had a ti- tighter housing market during those two post-COVID years. I wonder if we have sort of a, um, a rolling average, that's not the right word, uh, hopefully you know what I mean, an, an average over, you know, ten and twenty years?
Well, currently, s, you know, you, you mentioned Hillsdale, but just statewide, it's two percent, we're considerably under statewide. Um, if you look at the, um, St. Louis Federal Reserve has actually tracked vacancy rates, you know, using census data for like the last one hundred or so years, the average ten, in most communities, tends to be around seven or eight percent. Um, so, you know, if you wanna use that as a base mark for what's kind of considered a healthy market, um, you know, maybe it could be somewhere in that number, but we have been substantially lower for years, and we're still substantially lower than what the vacancy rate is for the state. Um, I, we don't have twenty twenty-four data yet, but the, the point nine percent is, is certainly accurate, and just anecdotally, you know, with all the individuals that contact the city that are looking for homes, you know, maybe they've accepted a job, you know, at the college or at the hospital, and you know, many times, these preferred candidates of our local employers have to actually turn down jobs because they can't find housing. So, you know, the, the data bears out that there is a shortage. You know, if you look at the increase too, just in property values within the city, and this is something that Kim can attest to, because spent a lot of time looking at the data, we've seen a very sharp, sharp uptick in property values here within the last five years, and so that's also another sign, you know, of using the data to determine, you know, if there is a severe housing shortage. So the data supports it, you know, anecdotally, supported by the interactions we have with, you know, our residents all the time.
Okay, so I'll begin with the anecdote, um, we subsidize the Hillsdale Commons project, uh, with, through the NEZ. Uh, two of those are still for sale, they've been for sale for five hundred days. Another one is for sale about three fifty to four hundred, I think those are the two prices that they're listed at. One of them has been for sale for two years.
I believe they list them before they start building, so that it's been for sale is maybe not, it hasn't been available.
Okay, yeah, I drove out there and it looks like they're completed to me, I mean.
They, 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 I believe they're getting close, um, they were in, talking to us about starting the next phase.
Okay, um, yeah, I, just looking at Zillow, I mean, there's houses from one fifty to five hundred thousand, basically every price point, and they've been on the market for months in many cases, um, so.
So those in the city?
In the city.
Okay, so I just pulled up, when that comment was made, I pulled up my Realtor dot com app.
Yep, that's what I did.
Okay, we currently have thirteen active listings in the city. The low price is a hundred and sixty-nine-nine, it's been listed for a hundred and three days. The high price is four ninety-nine-nine, it's been listed for a hundred and five days.
Right, yeah, that's exactly what I'm getting at, that seems.
So three months.
Right, that seems like a healthy, uh, market to me, about a three-month, uh.
Yes.
Uh, period for sailing. That doesn't seem to indicate a housing crisis, of course, this is the government, so everything's a crisis. Um, but that, that doesn't seem to quite match with, um, with the experience. Uh, the no fixer-upper thing, this is interesting to me, um, nearly everyone my age I know, including myself, bought an absolute dump, and they specifically wanted to put fifty to a hundred thousand dollars into it for the reasons of the Headley Amendment. I now have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, and I, I'm not gonna get taxed on that for probably fifteen to twenty years, I mean, that's really nice. So this idea that people don't want fixer-uppers is a little concerning. Our obligation should be to encourage the, the homes that currently exist to be fixed up, right? We wanna maintain our beautiful homes, our beautiful, um, historic homes, um.
Can, can, can we respond to that really quick?
Yeah, sure.
Just kind of, to kind of answer that. So, when, when we look at, you know, housing, we, currently, we need both renovation, rehab of our existing housing, as well as new development to contribute to our housing stock, because as was mentioned, you know, you look at sixty percent of our homes built before nineteen seventy, we know, you know, a number of them, um, sometimes they get blighted, uh, you know, they get burned down in a fire, so we're losing old homes every year, and the reality is, we do need to add new housing stock. We certainly wanna encourage renovation, and this council's done that, you know, they've done that through programs like the NEZs to, you know, encourage people to invest in the homes, uh, for a while, we have rental rehab to, you know, assist homeowners that were interested.
Bring that back.
And, so, so you, you, if you look at it from a comprehensive view, I think, you know, we would just say that both of those things are good, and both of those things that, you know, should be encouraged, but at some point, you do need some new building. We have had virtually zero new building in the last, you know, ten to twenty years.
That sum up by the college, very ugly homes, but some, some nice party barns that irritate the neighbors. And the council should do something about that, we, we should have standards for building, uh, architecture that looks, um, historic. Now, if there is a housing crisis, and it's so severe, why can't these houses be built at a market rate?
So, the, these homes are being built at a market rate, and, and I'll let the developer add to this, but one of the things that I want to, uh, make perfectly clear is, so we talked to a number of our local home builders here in Hillsdale. And, uh, if you were in the market, let's say, to have one of them building a new home today, it would probably cost you a cost of about two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot. You know, that is just a realistic price in terms of materials, labors, you know, minimal, probably, um, you know, minimal profit for, for that home builder. So, if you're looking at, let's just say, a sixteen hundred square foot home, because this development right here, we're looking at a range between sixteen hundred and twenty-two hundred square feet, but for a sixteen hundred dollar square foot home, if you're building brand-new, and you just assume, you know, two hundred and fifty dollars square foot cost, that's four hundred thousand dollars, right, right off the bat. And that's also probably assuming that, you know, you don't need to factor in the cost of added utilities, like roads, electric, water, sewer. When you look at the cost for that, you know, it could be anywhere between twenty to fifty thousand dollars or more in added price per unit. So the reality is, um, it's, it's not cheap to build new homes in today's market, but through this TIF, um, through using this, we're actually, not only does it make possible this development without the city having to pay for the infrastructure and install it upfront, but it actually does have an effect to lowering the final cost per unit. And so if, you know, if, if somebody else was to do the project, it'd be substantially higher. Um, so that's, you know, that kind of answers the question.
If one of our local contractors was to do the project, they wouldn't get these benefits. Um, and again, that, that doesn't answer the question, why, thank you, Bruce, Bruce is hitting that again. Uh, if, if there is a market, and if there is a crisis for housing, why isn't the market meeting the demand? Why do we have to subsidize some builders and not others?
Well, first of all, just to correct that, this council has worked with our local developers. If you look at the Stoll project, the neighborhood enterprise zone tool was used there, because that was the right tool for that specific project. So when you're looking at these, you know, the projects vary, and so, you know, what you actually need to do to get them across the finish line sometimes depends on the specifics of that project. In this, you know, in this case, the infrastructure costs are pretty cost prohibitive, to have to put in all that new electric, water, sewer, roads, and so that greatly inflates, you know, the project cost, but, um, you know, to say that the city is not working with other developers just isn't accurate.
Again, not, not, not what I'm claiming, I'm saying, were other developers given this deal?
Well, you know, I mean, we can't talk or speculate about current projects, I'll, I'll defer to Dave, but I will say, other developers are aware of these tools, and certainly, you know, they're, they're willing to look at them, and, and this is something that we can bring to council.
Yes, and to answer your question, Councilor Pellegrino, um, yes, we had, um, spoken to other local builders, particularly Stoll, looked at the subdivision, and they came back and decided it didn't quite fit their, um, plan. And so they purchased ground from the city, um, out by di-ride. And I suspect, because that infrastructure will have to be built to the same city standards as this subdivision, I suspect they will probably propose their own, um, brownfield TIF for that subdivision for the very same reasons. Um, because it allows that infrastructure to be, um, repaid and not necessarily be added to the top of the sales price, um, to encourage housing and encourage, uh, sales. Um, I, I just wanted to add, uh, a couple of points in regards to the same topic. So I wanna talk about my own personal experience nine years ago, because we all have different, very impersonal experiences for what we bought, by, who we know, and what they bought, but one is as late as today. Um, so, nine years ago, when I bought my house, um, for me and my family of five, we looked at everything that we could find in the market at that particular time. We could not find something that both my wife could agree upon and met our family needs in town. So we were forced outside the city, and I know I've been criticized for this because I live outside the city, but we could not find anything that met our needs at that time, so we purchased outside the city. As is mentioned from many, um, that because there is, um, such a shortage, and those, many folks are pushed outside the city. Um, that being said, today, I, where I live, uh, it's myself, and there's a house directly to the side of me. Um, that house recently sold in the last couple of weeks. Um, and I finally met my neighbors today, and unsolicited, I, he comes up, introduces himself to me at lunchtime, tells me where he's from, where he was moving to the area, and he told me that he looked at everything he could find, him and his wife did, within the community, and they did not find anything that didn't need less, in their opinion, less than a hundred thousand dollars worth of work, and they didn't want to do that amount of renovations. So, they, they saw this one outside the city, decided they wanted to move to Hillsdale, Patano, and they bought it, and he thought to himself, I can do the little things over time, but I don't have to spend a hundred thousand or more to, for something that really needs a lot of work. And this just happened at lunchtime, when I was getting ready to come back to work after letting my dogs out. He called me in the driveway and told me this exact story unsolicited. Um, I'm like, oh, okay, um, makes sense, and kind of, you know, on point with what we're talking tonight, but that is the experience many folks, uh, have, are experiencing, and just one additional one, um, a person I know that was at the college, uh, or is at the college who works, um, when he moved to town, he couldn't find anything to purchase within town, and so he ended up going to someone that had a house for sale, offering them so much to rent it from them, and then he bought it outside the city, um, and built his family home out there, and he rented that home, and I think it's probably been sold since. But, um, this is, um, over and over, you talk about where's the data? I ask rhetorically, where's the data, because we have professionals that are working in this industry for years. Sue Smith, um, Edwin Allen Holmes, John, their consultant, they work all over the state and they see this. And, um, and we see it, because Sam gets the calls for people asking, can they put their name on the list? Uh, you know, the fact that they have six dup- or duplex units um, in the price range we're talking about, and five of them, they're all filled, and only one left, that's, they're finished. So, that demonstrates there is a need, and again, they're taking one hundred percent of the financial risk upfront. Um, this is just a tool that best fits, as Sam would say, this particular development. I mean, we have the NEZ up by the college NEZ, we have the Stoll NEZ, we have, um, the industrial facilities, the commercial, the CREs, so we utilize these to promote certain things, and when they came out with this particular, um, program with the state, the Act three eighty-one, it was the tool we needed to make the subdivision work. The NEZ, um, you know, they use that in the first phase of three Meadows, and that's a benefit to the homeowner. Um, that's not a benefit on the front side of it, when you're putting in the, the, the infrastructure. So, again, you look at the tools you have, and the tool lots that the state's given us, and that's why we, you know, selected this one came to pass, and it was, I think it's important to note, originally, that was a big concern of the EDC board a couple of years ago, that, oh, all these would be rental units. And they expressed heavily that they wanted for-sale units. And, um, Brian heard that, and this tool came out that made it possible. Um, to talk about the area median income, um, that these homes are priced too high, just that, uh, on October fifteen, Corey Murray wrote an article about Hillsdale County Home Listings Ask For Less Money in September, but the median price is two sixty-seven-four in September, and two seventy-two four, um, from, um, uh, from the previous month, and they were, in twenty-three, they were about two sixty. So, the homes that we're talking about are, are air, the county's area median income, or, uh, price range, area median price range. So, they are appropriately priced, and the tool that's being used, um, is our best bet for, for this. So, sorry for the lengthy answer.
Um, thank you.
That's not, not, not a tool we created ourselves either, all these tech schemes that come from, uh, I hate them too, but, uh, you know, it's what Lansing sits around and does, is picks up these things and.
You, you asked a good question, especially about the insurance, um, the roads and stuff, but nobody in the last three years could say that insurance rates jumped twenty percent, twenty percent, and, you know, nobody can predict what it's gonna be in another ten years with the insurance rates, and it's just, you, you, you gotta guess, you just basically gotta guess. Because my insurance rate's gone up twenty-plus percent, I'm setting on my own, and it's gotten ridiculous, but you gotta adjust.
Counselor Horsey?
I just have a quick question for the, uh, developer. Uh, there was a, um, uh, suggestion from the audience that, uh, the houses that you're going to build here won't last very long.
Yeah.
And I noticed that you provided us with a map of various developments you've done, uh, over the years. Looks like over a hundred developments in the tri-state area. Um, could you give us an idea of how long these structures actually last?
Yeah, they are built to code, uh, to start off with, they're a hundred percent built to code. Um, and six months after, to be perfectly honest, I, I took a little offense to that, that sounded like a kind of a drive-by shot, and, and I wasn't happy about it. We're in business for over thirty years, we've never missed a payment to a bank, we've never been late to a payment to a contractor before. Um, our homes are built exactly to building codes, and in a lot of cases exceed the building codes. We use the same two-by-fours as every other builder, I invited everyone in this, uh, local officials to walk through our homes while they were under construction, I had a VP of Construction there. Because we wanna answer these questions, we build homes at a lower price point than, than most other builders. We do it because of a, a couple of things, one, volume, and two, the way we organize our building process. It takes most builders, on average, nine to, to sixteen months to complete a house, with time to shovel those in their own. That increases the financing charges, uh, to build house. We have scheduling set up, and we buy our, our labor in bulk, um, and we schedule it out, so there's activity happening on the house every single day. One of the comments I heard, um, at the open house was, my God, these, you know, I, I drove by here one day, there weren't houses here, I drove by the next day, there was duplexes with landscaping, but, um, so we, we, we pride ourselves on that. I also wanna talk about our customer satisfaction, I think one of the slides I had on there, Sam, if you could. Long story short, we do a customer survey. Long story short, we do a customer survey of all of our customers, uh, six months after they move into a house. Do you think you move into a new house, first day, you're probably really happy? Live there for six months, you start to notice when stuff goes wrong. Ninety percent of our customers were, I think, one of the top in the industry. Ninety percent of our customers would recommend one of our homes to a close family member or friend six months after moving in. So, Councilmember, I think...
So how long would they last?
I mean, a hundred years? Yeah, we've been in business thirty years, I haven't heard of one family yet.
You have to do main bits on the house to make it last longer. You gotta keep up on your main bits.
Yeah, that's true.
And that's gonna be up to the owner.
Yes.
Councilman here.
Uh, this was actually for Kimberly. So, I know, I was gonna, uh, uh, you know, what Josh was saying is, as far as, uh, a market downturn. Okay, and we have taxable value, we have assessed value. Just, I know it's kind of just a ballpark, but taxable value compared to assessed value is a little bit of difference there.
Yes.
And just like, was it like, is taxable maybe eighty percent of the real value, seventy percent? Or what would you say overall on properties?
So the assessed value is fifty percent of the market value. Taxable value is something less than that fifty percent.
Understood.
Um, right now, let me see if I have those numbers on here. I don't. Yeah, I don't have, um, the numbers in front of me. Right now, our taxable value, I believe, is about two-thirds of our assessed value. It's increasing more in the last few years because we've had a lot of properties on cap because a lot of properties have been selling.
So what you would say then is, if it's two-thirds, it'd be like, uh, the taxable value, say, sixty-six thousand, and the assessed value would be a hundred thousand, which actually double it, but I mean, would that be a good guess?
I mean, that's assuming that the same person owns it over time.
No, no, I understand that, because once it gets sold, it gets reassessed.
With this, yeah, with this, we're talking about new construction, it's gonna come on at fifty percent of the current market value.
And so they're gonna be pretty close, if, if not even.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna be the same for...
So even if, uh, I'm just saying, even if you do have a market correction say.
Yes.
That you do have a buffer kind of built in, where the taxable value's not gonna get the full grunt of the housing crisis or everything drops.
Correct.
And then, just by, of course, these are just, you know, they, annually, they would receive after this, about two hundred and twenty-eight thousand in taxes annually. Now, but, uh, taxes, the city gets forty percent, thirty-nine, what's the...
So you're, you're referring to, you're referring to how much the city would get when these all come back on the tax bills after the repayment?
Right, but I mean, on the taxes, the city doesn't get all of that, because some of them...
So that, that, yeah, well, that two hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, that is the city's share.
Oh, the two hundred and twenty...
Yep, that doesn't include county, that doesn't include schools, that is just the city's share.
Okay, right, so...
So then they would receive a hundred percent of that two hundred and sixty thousand.
No, I'd say it's two hundred, two hundred and twenty-eight.
Two hundred and twenty-eight, and of course, that will, you know, that will scale and increase in the future, because when you factor in inflation, and, and if there's an increase in property values, that number, you know, obviously, so it climbs somewhat over the years. So, you know, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand a year, twenty-five, and then again, that's in perpetuity. That's a revenue stream that right now doesn't exist, that the city will get every year forever.
Yeah, and, and just going forward, as far as addressing all the infrastructure problems the city has, it's like, because if, as a council, if we decide not to do this, we're gonna still get zero taxes. And it's, it's not like it's, we, they've owned it for twenty-five years, and they are getting some from the first area, I understand that. But on this, uh, part of it, it's not developed because it doesn't have the infrastructure. And by David's comments, it's actually been, you know, we have approached some other builders, but to come up with, uh, basically one point eight million on the infrastructure and just, you know, it's, it's, it's a big risk, so, um, I would really hate the council not to approve this, just so going forward, we don't stay in the same, uh, same, yeah, I mean, it, it, it's kind of thinking down the road, so I think one of the problems with past councils is, well, we're talking twenty-five years, well, I'm not gonna be here. Let's just spend it what we want right now and let the future councils worry about the ramifications of those ill-advised thoughts as far as with our current road situation. So, uh, that being said, I would be very much supportive of this action.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilman Sohan.
Thank you, Mayor, um, lots of good questions and discussion, I appreciate that. Um, I, I have a couple of questions for the developer. So you said something that just struck me a bit. Um, you said if we do things right, a number of times, while you were making your presentation that you'll get your money back, could you help me understand what that means?
Yes, great, great question. So what I meant by if we do things right, that means if our data is correct. So if we're targeting the right market, two eighty to three sixty, um, if we sell these homes the right way, um, which we know how to do, I think, by any one mistake. Basically saying, if we do things right, the risk is on us, and we only get paid back if we build homes that look like this, if we build homes and sell like we're anticipating them to sell. If our data is correct, um, that's what I meant by if we do things right. And every development we do, we do things right.
I appreciate that. Um, so I, I have three just big red flags. The first is my policing, well, not police, but the fire department and the ambulance services, and the dialeride services, which will all be necessary to provide to the development, have, right now, have to go six miles out of their way to arrive there. Dialerides already in money, losing venture, um, if we have people that are ultimately in workforce housing, which I need to clarify that too, if you would, um, in a moment. Um, that's really frustrating, and I understand that the railroad is supposed to, um, without forbid, to rebuild the bridge, or raise it, or fill it in, in, in twenty twenty-six, and I just think maybe, um, if that were already there, or if we were able to do an easement in the property that was already sold to connect to Bacon, something to get, uh, public safety accessible to the neighborhood, uh, without having to go all the way out to Long Lake Road, that would a little bit ease my heart, but right now, I, I don't like that at all. What are your thoughts on that?
So first of all, we take public health and safety.
Okay, Brian. Okay.
Yeah, no, no.
So, so real briefly, I, I can't control the outside infrastructure and the railroads and things like that. It does sound like in two years, the railroad is addressing that, and we're gonna be adding these on at, you know, we gotta build the infrastructure, which is gonna take about a year, year and a half, uh, to start, and then it's looking like adding ten homes a year, uh, to that. So it's not, it's not if you approve this next summer, we're putting in sixty-one homes. Um, it's if you approve this, we'll start the infrastructure probably in the spring or summer of next year, and then that'll be completed for Phase One, and then it'll be ten homes a year after that. So it'll be a gradual increase, but by that time, I think the, which I have no firsthand knowledge of, it sounds like the bridge will be raised for the railroad.
Well, I'll jump in there, and, um, Jason, if you could come up, because Jason has the firsthand knowledge, but, um, on the, um, M-NOT rail, um, they have committed to us, and they're actually putting that out to bid in twenty twenty-five for a twenty twenty-six construction.
Yes, sir.
Is what they have committed to us for, is that correct, Jason?
Correct, we've had correspondence today that is still in plan. They talked about how to expedite it as much as we can because of the, uh, frequency of accidents we've been having, but it's a pretty solid date right now, uh, when you talk, was it?
Yeah, that, and that, um, we haven't seen the plan yet, but, um, that will accommodate our public safety vehicles, and that, and that's been expressed and that's our concern. Now, on dialeride, currently dialeride goes out there multiple times a day, and Jason, how many times would you say buses out there for Will Carlton?
Any average day, twelve to fifteen, twenty times, depending on the day, as they have different, uh, stops for sparks and, um, key opportunities and so forth throughout the day, not just for the beginning, more in service.
So that, the point I'm making is they're out, already out there. Um, so dialeride, it probably would not see any, um, additional...
But dialeride has to go all the way out to Long Lake and back, correct?
Lake, Lake...
Safelife.
Correct, yes, correct.
The other rails, that is another.
Yeah, they both, actually, public sa, uh, fire truck and, and the, the public safety has to go out there for fire. Um, it has to go out, probably out Bacon, uh, around Lake Wilson to Halton, come around that way. Particularly if they're in the, uh, fire truck and, um, some of their vehicles, I know, I believe probably the four-wheeled ride truck could probably get under Halton Bridge, Dan, is that... Yeah, so some of our equipment would, could, would have to go around, but some...
Could get under that bridge.
Yeah.
The new pumbers and grasses, go out of truck and three, two, and three, three, three.
I understand some vehicles that might fit under there physically because of antennas and other equipment. They're, they go around anyways, because they don't want to damage that accidentally, but, uh, you know, maybe it's, maybe this plan's a year too fast, because if I had, I know they're saying, the railroad is saying that they're gonna do something next year, but until it actually gets done, it's just, uh, it's just talk. So in addition to, to that, uh, my, my biggest, like, based on what's happening nationally in the Midwest and small towns with immigration, and you have a caveat in here, you intend to sell the homes, but if they don't, if the market doesn't absorb it, then you can rent it, and you're gonna go through some third-party agency and, you know, government's in place, and I, um, it, I cannot consciously vote for a project that has the possibility of going to some state or federally funded, um, program that is gonna bring in illegal immigrants to our community, sixty-two times four, or whatever. And, um, I, I can't do that, that would completely change our, uh, culture permanently, and it's irreversible. What guarantees do I have? Guarantees, can you amend the contract to ensure that this project will never be utilized for those purposes, even if you can't sell them and they have to bear this copper, uh, this other business?
Yeah, so your concerns, I think, are well-founded. You've never met me, you've never worked with our company before, so I understand where you're coming from, and your job is to protect your community. Copper Bay is a wholly owned subsidiary of the Alabamian Homes, it's not a third-party rental agency. Um, I can text a leasing agent right now to say how many homes are valid, and how many homes are filled in Hillsdale, she gets right back to me. The maintenance crews that work on the Alabamian Homes, uh, the Copper Bay Homes, are our employees. Um, I've had Sam pull up the website, this is Copper Bay, you can look at the available homes. This is the only other option if we don't sell. We've got no relationships with any federal authorities, we've got no relationships with state housing agencies and things like that. So if the homes don't sell, can you go to available homes, we can show the council member the prices? So if they don't sell at the first option, which is our first choice, our first preference, they get listed here, and you can see on the map where they are, and you can see the prices they go for. So if you scroll down, you can see, you know, the homes, the models, I mean, this is, this is where they would go. So I hope this brings you some, some trust. That White Cloud home is another workforce housing home, which is the, the lower rent. Uh, but we've got prices on here from twenty-seven hundred to nineteen hundred a, a month, um, and so that is where they would go. It, it would not, our bread and butter is trust with communities. We started working in Three Rivers twenty years ago, or fifteen years ago, and it's that trust that allows us to, to continue going back for project after project after project. White Cloud was my first project since I went with the company. I've got letters of recommendations from that city manager that I take to every other city I go and work with. If we burn one of these communities, we're done. If we do what your fear is, and it's legitimate fear, we're done, so that is not a, a possibility. As far as adding something to the contract language, we can talk about that in the reimbursement agreement, but I'm happy to put whatever guardrails and like on it.
That's, um, nice to hear, actually, um, I, um...
Trust is the most important commodity we deal in, as a thirty-year-old home builder, and we guard that extremely, uh, harshly.
So...
With our homeowners and municipalities, sorry for that.
No, no, you're, uh, we're, we're having a dialogue here today.
Okay.
So, in addition to that, with the, I think you said eighteen hundred, nineteen hundred dollars, and, you know, CJ is intimately involved in our rental market, says that that's well above what, um, she's able to do within the city, um, although you've apparently rented seven of the eight duplexes, which is, um, I saw cars in one of them the other day. So that, I mean, that shows me something, the... No, I, I get it, I had to refill my tea.
And I mean, it's like, half hour is perfect, and it's like...
So, forgive me for getting off track for a second, the water distracted me.
Sorry. And I called my colleague my water boy.
He was saying he was willing to put safeguards into the contract to ensure that...
Oh, thank you, thank you. So, I know this is in addition to that, but Sam brought up a good point, when, not you Sam, the other Sam, uh, when he was dissenting against this, is the model, the, the, the pha, the pha, the pha of your homes is, is not inviting neighborly communication, it's, it's, it's inviting me to push my garage door opener, pull inside, and go and turn on my TV, and then isolate myself, and while I'm watching TV, pull this thing up and pretend that I'm actually interfacing with the world. Whereas my house, you know, most of the houses in the city do have front porches, which invites my wife and I to go and sit out after work and have a glass of wine and talk, and, and people will walk by and will wave and will say hi, and it's very engaging and neighborly. I know this is a little different because it's gonna be an isolated community, um, but still, it would be nice to be able to walk through the community, um, and have, have that type of interaction. Is there any way to, I know, I know, cost savings, I mean, you're gonna spend two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars a home based on your fifteen point five million dollars that you said it was gonna cost you to put this out. You're spending that, so I understand why you need, you want the seven million dollars back, or whatever, I don't know exactly what your portion of that is. You, you wanna make some money, I get that. It just frustrates me that that's happening without houses that have the traditional Midwestern style appeal, historic, traditional, not modern, traditional, and, um, and also that we're not collecting any of the taxable income, um, to be into the city's coffers for at least twenty years, or maybe more if you can sell them all as fast as you can, but if you can't, I, I don't know, those things are just really hard for me to reconcile.
So, so the, the twenty-year projection is with one percent inflation, and that's if we sell all of them and don't rent any of them. So if the inflation rate's above one percent, that shortens it. If we, if we lease a couple out, that shortens it as well. So I think when we do these projections, we want to present the city with the worst-case, quote-unquote, worst-case scenario, that we're gonna recover up to twenty years is what the projections say, and if you peel back the numbers and digitize the numbers, we're not selling you kind of smoke and mirrors. This is one percent inflation rate, a hundred percent owner-occupied, with the exception of the twenty percent workforce housing rental. Uh, and so that's how we kind of build our, our projections and then sell to you.
And I think it's important to mention that these are the conservative numbers as far as the payback, and this council, um, has had discussions on the IFEs and the, uh, CREs, the corporate industrial. Why don't, why doesn't the developer be more, and I know Josh, this was your comment, why doesn't the developer... Why don't, why doesn't the developer be more, and I know Josh, this was your comment, why doesn't the developer or the builder or owner, give themselves a little more time so they don't have to come back to the council and get a correction or an update or amendment to their plan if they had just put down an extra two years in case something happens? Cause we had this discussion with two twenty-one industrial, um, coming back. And, um, so in, in the performers, we put the conservative amount for that twenty-two years. And with the hopes of the uptake being shorter and the money being, the, the, um, cost being refunded quicker and back on the tax rolls quicker. So this, that was kind of a, kind of a, you know, a, an approach to be conservative and not, you know, have to come back to council down the road and, and do an amendment. Being cognizant of those comments in previous meetings.
I just have one quick question on the, uh, the affordable housing financing gap of three point six million dollars. How is that derived?
Uh, that's derived with a formula published by the state of Michigan and I'm going to call, uh, to cover the details on that.
I get all the hard technical questions, bear with me. Uh, yeah, so, uh, the words in the statute say the eligible activity is financing gaps associated with the construction of affordable housing, which requires somebody to decide, decipher what, what did the legislature mean when they said that? Uh, so, uh, Michigan State Housing Development Authority published guidance, uh, which took about nine months for them to come up with, uh, but it came out this past winter. Uh, and they established the, the financing gap should be calculated, uh, taking HUD's fortieth percentile rent. Taking that number dividing by forty percent equals, uh, theoretical hundredth percentile rent. That becomes your control rent, that's how they describe it. You take that number and subtract the rent that you're charging to income qualified households equals the gap. And then you take that gap multiplied by the number of units, multiplied by the number of years of affordability equals your subsidy. So that's something that we're going to need to be, we, the development team, uh, will need to be income qualifying the residents of those, uh, of those units, they must be below a hundred and twenty percent AMI. Uh, we need to report that information annually to the Brownfield Authority, who needs to report to Michigan State Housing Development Authority for compliance with that, hopefully I answered your question on how that happens.
And I just have one other question is, um, are you getting any money from Mishda for the project as well?
Uh, it depends on what you mean by that. Uh, is, is Mishda providing any direct grant subsidy or debt financing? No, um, there, uh, anytime you have taxing around financing, there's, uh, different categories of millages involved. You've got your state school tax millages, your eighteen mil school operating, six mil state education debts. Then you've got your collection of locally controlled millages, that's kind of everybody else. And then you have your debt millages, uh, I believe the only debt millage here is a small school debt. So we capture the Brownfield Authority and City Council as the authorization to capture the non-debt local millages. Uh, that's the action you're considering tonight. And then, uh, the Michigan State Housing Development Authority needs to approve a separate document that will prepare. Uh, if this is approved, uh, that would authorize the capture of the school taxes. So it's sort of an expansion of the Brownfield plan that we sent to Mishda along with Brownfield Authority to capture school taxes. So Mishda is involved, um, through the authorization to capture the state school tax millages, but it's not providing debt or grant funds.
Thank you.
Yeah, my primary apprehensions are, uh, are, um, I kind of agree, I mean, I very much agree with Bruce. That land's just been sitting out there for years, it's a blight on the city. Not so concerned with the way that the house looks so much, uh, because it's not really in the city, it's kind of out in the outskirts of the city. So it's not like, it's not a historic neighborhood, it's already a subdivision of the city, it's just an incomplete subdivision. But the biggest things that I, that I have apprehensions about is what Robert mentioned, and that is, um, uh, some sort of, if these houses don't sell, that they will become open for immigration. And that's not, that's not a ring wing conspiracy, it's, I get articles sent to me from other mayors, other towns. Um, that's happening in Indiana, it's happening in Ohio, uh, Lackland, Lackland, Ohio, Langsport, Indiana, and Coldwater, Michigan, frankly, it's happening to our neighbors. So that is something that really does concern me. So I, I, I felt really, really encouraged when you said that there was possibility of some sort of language in the contract that could be, um, amended to make sure something like that never happened. Uh, the other issue, the other big issue that I'm concerned about is just the people that are out there already. And I'll tell you, I ran for state representative this last summer, didn't work out, but I locked, I knocked a lot of doors and that was one of the places that I knocked was that, uh, was that subdivision over there. And they expressed a lot of, um, a lot of apprehension themselves and then it also ought to, I don't want to say finger wagging, but we're happy with council for considering this. And those are all people that I represent, so that's something that weighs on me too. And then finally, the last thing is, it's, you know, it just seems like every time we get into one of these, and I, I would, you know, Dave was talking about all these different, uh, di- different statutes that come from the state of Michigan, their economic development statutes, these are the things that Hillsdale, the city of Hillsdale cooks up. Uh, the things that Lansing cooks up and communities either use them or they don't, most communities do use them and our, our community, um, I don't know, I guess that's what the administration is there to kind of discover things like that, that they think will make improvements to the town. But it seems like every time Hillsdale gets involved in one of these things, we're looking at it ten, fifteen years deadline saying, it didn't turn out the way that we thought it was going to be. Hence, I mean, that's what brought us to this point was one of these deals that didn't turn out exactly the way that it was supposed to go. So those are some apprehensions I've had, that I have. I really have mixed feelings about this, appreciate what you guys are trying to do. And I have for a long time looked out at Three Meadows and been like, man, it's what a shame what's happening with, what, that, that never materialized to be what, uh, one of our several previous councils ago meant for it to be. And here we have the residents of Hillsdale who are the ones that are left holding the back on it, so. But the big thing, biggest thing is the prospect of, and I don't want to sound, uh, paranoid about it, but like I said, it's a real concern, it's really happening in, in the Midwest and it's really happening to some of our neighbors that are close, close to us where their populations have just exploded because, and it's quite often centered around workforce housing, so.
Yeah, so thank you for your concerns. A couple things real quick, I just went to the Copper Bay, um, apply here page and you can see the steps we require our prospective tenants to go through. Um, and one thing we do is income verification, so even outside the workforce housing category, we require income verification. So we're not going to rent to someone and set them up for failure. Um, so when you add in a workforce housing, it goes by workforce housing in some areas, it goes by missing middle in other areas. The exact legal precise term is, uh, eighty percent AMI to a hundred and twenty percent AMI. So if I pull this screen up right here, uh, what that looks like for Hillsdale is they could make more than this. So you're looking at a family of six, a hundred and ten thousand, family of five, a hundred and three thousand. Uh, in White Cloud, we had a family who went into one of my first houses. Mom was a preschool teacher, dad mechanic, who made a hundred and three thousand dollars. Last year, Mish's qualifications were ninety-eight thousand dollars. And so when they call up our leasing agent, Lexi, they, uh, you know, Lexi looked at the Mishda chart and said, I'm sorry, you don't qualify. Mishda updated the numbers, I sent it around to the team. Lexi, being in our gang, called back the mom, who I should also point out, was living in her old house basement with three young kids under the age of eight with a triple stack bunk bed. So you can understand when Lexi called back and said, oh, Mish just updated the numbers, you do qualify. The mom bursts from tears and they now live in one of the houses up in White Cloud. And so for workforce housing, missing middle, that's what we're talking about. If you go, so I should have had this slide made. We're aiming for the missing middle workforce housing thing is the Goldilocks, right? Mishda puts a cap in order to qualify for the taxes and things that we're seeking on how much you can make. We internally, out of good business practice, put a minimum of how much you can make. So we're looking for people that fall right into that category right there.
Yeah, no, absolutely, and I was in no way, uh, implying that you guys are like standing behind the podium right now, lying to us or like rubbing your hands like, oh, they're going to see how this turns out, you know? I, I don't think that that's your intention, I just, um, I don't know, going to a worst case scenario and I, I don't, I don't, it didn't mean to imply that you were trying to mislead us to bring people from else, I think, or to, or to our community. I'm just talking about the, the possibility of it happening, not the intentional probability of it happening.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, of course. Council goes.
So just to clarify, any, if someone buys or rents your home, they don't qualify for any state or federal, they can't qualify for state or federal housing assistance?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. It has, have you bought the land?
Uh, it's under agreement, right?
Okay.
It's an agreement. The way we develop and, uh, before this, that was a municipal government, and I wish developers would act like this. We don't want to buy the land and then start the entitlement process, we want to get everything done ahead of time and then, because that way now, let's say we bought this land and this deal didn't happen, now we're sitting on the land, it's five years, it's still a blame on that, on that community, as you said, Mr. Mayor. So we, we have an option agreement to buy it, um, so that's where we are right now.
And what's the purchase price on it?
I believe it's fifty thousand, thirty-five thousand.
Um, it's one fifty-five, twenty-two acres.
It's based on a lot of sale.
That's right, for a lot.
Yep.
So it's one, one hundred fifty-five thousand, one fifty-five.
All right, uh, yeah, good. Um, did you consider buying one to, or building one to two bedroom homes?
For our price point, you know, again, we've got a lot of market data, the demand just isn't there and, you know, once you, we hear this a lot and it's late, I'm probably saying more than I should right now, but a lot of times planners are like, build tiny homes, build this and that. Um, the market's just not there, they look cute unless you're in a vacation community. Like I said, I have said a thousand times, we build eight hundred homes a year, we know it sells. The value for us is providing, you know, the upstairs washer and dryer for our customers, the three to four bedrooms is, is really the sweet spot. You go to the one to two, it's hard to make the margin we need to make these deals work because you're putting in the roof, you're putting in the walls, you're putting in the driveway, you're putting in all the other stuff you would normally put in, you're just spreading your cost over a smaller square foot than people pay less for.
Yeah, yeah, uh, that, that's my main concern, um, the Hillsdale, this doesn't involve you, but the Hillsdale Commons Development, the NEZ.
And how many bedrooms are those, do you know?
I believe they're three to four.
I believe that's correct, it depends on which unit, so the four bedrooms or the four.
There, there, there are some, there are some two bed, two bath varieties as well for the duplexes there at Hillsdale Commons. And so those are actually a step above in terms of priced here for a much different project, product. And again, those are duplexes and not three and four bedroom, single family detached.
Right, yeah, my main concern is we're doing Hillsdale Commons subsidized, the NEZs on Manning Street subsidized, these subsidized. And to me, I, I want roofs over people's heads and, you know, this is going to exclude the bottom eighty percent, right, by definition. And if we're going to be giving sort of assistance to people, we need to assist the people who really need it, who, who could never afford to build a home on their own. And I just think that these programs are continually targeted toward laptop workers, professionals, administrators at the college and at the hospital. And, uh, we have homeless people, right? So I, I want a roof over everyone's head, not an expanding population when we can't take care of the people who are already, uh, here.
Can I respond to that quickly?
Sure, yeah.
So I, uh, there are two points that I think it's important to emphasize. One is, this isn't necessarily about expanding Hillsdale's population, growing the city into a more urban area, I've heard that.
How would it not?
Well, this is about meeting the current existing demand in the market that we know is.
So with eight thousand residents, we're going to get another, they're going to fill sixty-two homes without adding any new people?
Oh, it's not, it's not what we're saying, but this is not, you know, part of this, this plan to, you know, transform Hillsdale. When you look at our total number of housing units and, you know, eight thousand residents here and you're talking about sixty-one homes, it's not a large percent per se, but what this will do is, is meaningfully make progress towards helping alleviate that housing shortage. And there is a benefit even to folks who necessarily, um, you know, might not buy these homes. What you see happen often is when you add residential housing supply in a city that's facing a housing shortage, the, the way that this helps folks and it benefits the community as a whole, um, in, in the economics world, there's a, there's a term called filtering. And what that, what that term means is it describes the process by which, you know, let's say, here's just a hypothetical example. You have a family in the city of Hillsdale, currently they might have a small, you know, one bedroom or, you know, one or two bed, you know, uh, bungalow, let's say, a single story. Well, they have a growing family and perhaps they're looking to upgrade their living situation. So, you know, they move into one of these homes and then that frees up their home to be listed on the market. And often, you know, that home, because it's more of a starter home, gets listed at a price that is affordable to folks with more modest incomes. So you have that cascading effect that happens. And so if you look historically, um, throughout US history, when you're adding, when you're building new homes, you're adding, you know, to that housing supply, it's very rare that those homes can actually be brought to market at that, you know, price point you're talking about that is maybe affordable for folks, you know, kind of at the lower end of the income spectrum. But when you look at what actually causes homes to be affordable, you will find that in communities as homes age, as they depreciate in value, as folks are able to, you know, basically size up in terms of what they're buying, all of that contributes to more healthy and stable market where there's more supply to go around. And really, you know, it's a supply and demand issue at the end of the day. If we don't have the supply here to meet the current demand, you know, it doesn't take any pressure off our housing market and the cost of rents, the cost of buying a home continue to go up. By adding a little bit to the supply, we can try to help stabilize the market to a certain extent. And, uh, that in turn, like I said, it does free up other housing options for folks who, you know, maybe aren't looking at buying something like this, but they would be in the market for a new starter home if that came available.
Yeah, uh, I still don't, it, it, the council's role should be to, uh, not to tinker with the market. We're just not a central planning operation. And we, we keep hearing that there's a market for this, there's a crisis, but we can't meet it without using the tools of government action, which means that the market is not calling for new houses, right? Uh, I understand we don't have a free market, there's a lot of subsidization, but Michigan is bleeding residents to states with lower general tax rates. Our policy should be here, I've said this over an hour, lower the general tax rate, make new building affordable for all families. Don't give special carve-outs to, um, the, the wealthier, um, residents. I also worry, it does seem like the policy of the council should actually be to keep the housing market tight so that the people who live there, live here have, uh, valuable homes, uh, rather than increasing the supply and therefore dropping the average price of homes. Uh, just a few more, um, uh, uh, brief question, or brief comments and then I'll, I'll let it go. I received an email that the density of Hillsdale about fifty years ago was three people per home, now it's two point five. And I was looking this up for the state, it looks like it was about three point five per home in the state. And this is, these are factors outside of our control, right? Divorce, fewer children, uh, people don't have extended family living in the home, all of these things. This indicates that we need smaller homes, right? And I, I get we want to, we want to help people, but we're subsidizing people with larger families at the, at the higher end of the income bracket. To me, when I think of workforce housing, the immediate association is the working class. The working class almost by definition is people with fifty percent of median income or less. People who go to work and earn a wage rather than a salary. And that's the type of people, in theory, that we should be helping with workforce. So the density issue is a big issue. Also, our declining population in the last census indicates that we don't have this, this rush of new people, uh, coming to live here. Um, and then, then I think the last question is, can we commit in the contract to using, uh, local contractors?
Uh, starting with your last question first, we look for lawyers and contractors wherever we go, so I'm sure we're going to be open to, to that. We're not going to commit to anything we can a hundred percent do, uh, to the point earlier about trust. So I'm not going to say we're going to actually use local contractors when we can. If we do, what happens a lot of times, we go to. If we do, what happens a lot of times, we go to new cities, we pick up a new contractor and they end up working for us across the state. So we're, we're definitely gonna be open to it. We're like every other home builder. We need contractors. We need laborers. We need tradespeople as quickly, as fast as possible. So the idea that we're not gonna be open to, to new, um, contractors is not correct. We, we need local tradespeople.
I've not claimed that. I just keep speaking statement. I've not said that.
Um, and then your other question, where the workforce housing is fifty percent of the, the, the median income. Just the definitional, the definition I'm using today is the one from statute. It's eighty to one twenty.
I, I am, yeah.
And I've got the numbers. You have the worst seat for the presentation.
No, no, and I understand the numbers, but when we think about the working class, I think of people who earn a wage. Right by definition, they're not white collar. They're working class. This is almost entirely gonna be structured for white collar work. I know you might dispute that, but
Okay.
if you make forty or fifty thousand, these homes are not gonna be fit for you, right? At eighteen hundred dollars a month, we're talking twenty thousand dollars a year in rent. That's fifty percent of your wage to rent.
See, we don't wanna go to fifty percent of your wage, but the family, the first family I met that lived in one of the workforce housing, uh, units that I put up was in White Cloud. And it was the family I just talked about where you got the mom's a preschool teacher, the dad's mechanic. And they make a hundred and three thousand a year. I think you're seeing a lot of that with double income families. Amazon delivery people can make fifty thousand a year. You get a couple, you're over a hundred thousand.
That's a whole other issue is the double income family. A lot of us.
I can't sell that today.
A lot of, of residents want single income families. We'd like to get back to the dream of the nineteen seventies and eighties where we can actually educate our own children. Um, yeah, I think there's a lot of philosophical differences here. I don't think there is a market because you have to use a tax subsidy. You're saying that's part of the market. I think we should have a low general tax rate rather than targeted subsidies where we pick a winner and say that no one else can build. Um, I think that we need smaller homes and we need to build within our means, uh, as our state and our population get, uh, you know, uh, are poorer than the average. Um, but I appreciate, uh, all of your help, uh, answering these questions today. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. What happens if this fails? What, 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 if?
Um, so to not be, if, if this fails tonight, we won't get the development. This is, this is a, the, one of the tests they talk about is the bug four. Uh, and that's one of the stories I haven't bought the land yet, is that we need this incentive, um, to make the deal pencil. So without the incentive, the risk is too high. We've got other communities already working. And, and no hard feelings if that's.
But you guys are already out there.
We're out there on the first portion.
Yeah.
And those, uh, you know, we got great cooperation from the administration and, and the, the team that handles the building permits and the, the trades. So it's a very cooperative community. We like Hillsdale. We, we wanna be here, which is why we're here right now.
Councilman, Mayor.
Yeah, uh, this is probably, uh, because Josh was, um, going toward, uh, urban density with adding sixty-one homes. We can't forget that, well, you're, you're talking would increase the population of Hillsdale. Uh, and you can't forget the fact that how many homes up around the college have been demolished. I'm gonna say in, in the last twenty years, conservatively, I would think at least twenty, I don't know, Kimberly could probably back me up on that. That they've actually, they, they buy the homes, they tear them down and until they have something else coming, they aren't replacing them. So we're actually, because of the growth of the college, not meaning it negative at all, but we have lost some houses. Could you, about how many? Do you have that?
Jason just said he did, he was tallying up not too long ago. Came up with twenty-six that he knew of. So, and I, I would guess the number's actually a little higher than that. It just depends how far back you wanna go.
Right. And so then I'm, you know, so we're adding sixty-one, but we're talking another six years. I'm thinking from your estimates, you probably won't start the first building until maybe two years from now.
Yeah, I'll play next year.
Late next year, okay. And then planning to do ten a year.
Ten a year after that.
And if sixty-one, I've got another six years. Um, so you're only looking at, at maybe thirty more or so, I mean, and then that thing.
And just as I'm thinking about this, the count, the, um, hotel project is gonna eliminate another, at least four that I know of.
Yeah. So I, you know, and of course, from the city standpoint, we're, we're getting nothing for this. And if, if this council decides to say, well, because of this reason and that reason, then it doesn't fit, uh, historical things for the city and things like that. But we're gonna have that land sitting there for probably another twenty years because the, the city doesn't have the money to do that one point seven and, you know, into the roads. And, um, I just think it's a really good opportunity going forward. And, uh, it's, you know, if, like, again, if, if the council decides not to do it, well, we're gonna be looking at that metal for quite a bit longer, so.
Councilman, over.
Just what concern I had was that, I talked to our city manager about this three days ago. Is that the first time that I saw this was at five o'clock on, on Thursday. And, you know, then, then I got all, I started getting all these emails and everything else. And, um, I'm wondering, I mean, I don't wanna say, I'm not asking the question, what happens if it fails? I know if it fails, we're not gonna do it. But the question would be, what if we delayed it? And giving people time to focus through it, like, like I said, you know, there was, I, I don't, this was all the, I printed off. This is what I got, you know, Thursday evening. Um, and now we're looking at it. So I'm just wondering, what if we delayed it for, until the next council meeting or, or whatever? Um, what would that do in terms of your decision about what, you know, whether to go forward or not?
Yeah. If, if it's a no vote, we're not doing the project. If it's not a no vote, we're still in the game.
We, we can delay it until another meeting. We, we have the public hearing. That is the requirement to hold a public hearing. We can bring it back for a vote if somebody felt like they wanted to think about it more. I'm not suggesting that, but I'm saying that's not a, it's not a, uh, stopper. I think there's been a lot of interesting points made that, uh, that have long-term implications. And I'm not opposed to that. So, Councilman Sharp.
This is my last chance to vote, and I wanna vote. I would get it clearly out there to get the vote. And expose yourself, show which way you're going. If you don't want this, then you don't want growth. You want Hillsdale to stay stagnant. The concern about migrant workers, that's ridiculous. We can have, but we're not Coldwater. Those are people that are brought up to work at Clums. I don't work at Coldwater anymore. They build houses there. They've got those humans there. They're not migrants. They're not eating their cats and dogs.
You can say that now.
But that's where you pointed up one city in Ohio out. So let's just get this straight. Let's just vote tonight and get it over with. Let's, let's see where we're gonna go with this. Because I've been on this council. I've been wanting this done since I've been on council, the development of the housing, the public safety, the growth of this, getting these streets fixed. Let's vote on it. Let's put it out there tonight.
I, I understand your points that you're making, Bruce, but I also am, uh, I, uh, am wary of, when you're at your last meeting, wanting to jam things through when people are thinking about things. That's not, it's not doing a service to your constituents.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, just a second. You've been out there shopping for houses. You know what the housing market's about. You know what it's like. I know what's going on. I really believe we should be given the right to vote tonight. And if you don't do that, then I resign right now.
Bruce is making a motion.
I made the motion. We vote on this development.
I second that.
Motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilwoman Pratt. Councilwoman Bell.
I was just gonna, are, are there any homes that can be built on the existing infrastructure?
We've done it.
All, all available property?
Yeah, when we first looked at the, uh, in, in this development, we looked at the first portion and we built the duplexes on that.
Okay. Yeah, I was just gonna say, if there was somewhere you could continue to build, maybe we could take a vote on that. I just, I just disagree that we aren't taking a risk. We're adding new infrastructure. This is a long-term cost to the city. We can't maintain the infrastructure we have. Uh, but, okay. I'll be done.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Real quickly, I just wanted to point out one thing. Um, when, uh, Brian had, had came to the community, one of his first things that he did kind of seek out was infill bots. I know that was mentioned earlier, but it was never really addressed. They actually, uh, and Brian himself had sought out infill bots, um, to build additional housing on. So that is something that could happen in addition to this, which in the community, if lots come out.
Yes, so in addition to this, uh, I have that great point. We just bought thirty-six lots in Muskegon, all former demolition sites, infill lots attached to infrastructure. We've got a purchase agreement on a hundred and thirty-six lots in Jackson. Um, I've got twenty-two, uh, lots under contract in Nigels, Michigan. So the infill lots is, is very exciting to us. We don't see it as in, you know, this or that. And we do have styles of infrastructure or architecture that do fit a newer urban style with a front porch and a rear loaded garage. They can be built on Alex. We do have that. I see this vote as a beginning of a relationship of, of how we can build together. Um, I don't see it as one of the other.
Well, you've done a hell of a job presenting it for two hours.
My voice fell down.
Yep. Got a motion on the floor from Councilman Sharp, seconded by Councilwoman Pratt. All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a roll call, please? City clerk.
Councilwoman Pratt, yes. Councilperson Sharp?
Yes.
Solfa.
No.
Veer?
Yes.
Wolfram?
Yes. But I just wanna say, we, we're, we're not voting to delay it.
We're voting.
We're voting on the whole thing. My vote's no. Gary's was yes.
Okay.
And it passes, cause Josh is the last one. It doesn't matter what he says.
Orsi?
Yes.
And, yeah, Telugino?
Nope.
Good job, Brian.
Yep. Yes, it was, it was, it was three, six, one, eight, guys.
Thank you, Katie. And good job, impatient council. That was really good. It was.